Good afternoon, everyone. I call the meeting to order for the September 28 study session. Madam Clerk?
I'll be conducting roll call verbally. Councilmember Blom.
Here.
He's via Zoom. Councilmember Brenner.
Here.
Councilmember Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Duffield.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Mayor Protan Maldune is currently absent. And Mayor Avery.
Here. Thank you. So we're moving on to item two, current business. So we're now going to talk about the first item, clarification of consent calendar. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any clarifications regarding items on the consent calendar? Thank you. Councilmember O'Neil.
Nope.
Councilmember Dixon.
I do not.
Councilmember Blom.
I have none.
Thank you. Councilmember Duffield.
I have none.
And I have none. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a check presentation, which is always fun, by the Newport Arts Foundation. So let's have Newport Beach Arts Foundation President Juanita Holly come to the podium and say a few words, and then we can take a photo.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mayor Avery. I'm Juanita Holly, President of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. And we have two other board members here, Carmen Smith and Pat Jorgensen. We are just delighted today to have this opportunity to make a presentation to the City Arts Commission. But let me say before we start, this is a continuation of a presentation we started last weekend, where we hosted a luncheon for the artists and for some of our city officials. And we had over 70 guests there. And so today is a continuation of that celebration for Phase Seven of the Sculpture Garden. And we are going to make our presentation to the City Arts Commission to support that effort, the Sculpture Garden, as well as just public art for Newport Beach. None of this would be possible without the coordination of our cultural arts director, Tim Hetherton. So we want to thank him for all that he's done to help all of this happen and to come together. So, would you like to say something?
Well, on behalf of the Arts Commission, Juanita, Carmen, Pat, and the members of the Arts Foundation Board, we thank you for your wonderful support. This donation is many years of hard work and tours of the Sculpture Garden in 95-degree heat on opening days, three times they did that. They've always been there for us in all my years on the Arts Commission since 2011. They've always been there volunteering, lending support in every way they could. And for they to be giving us this donation, this is a significant amount of their treasury. And they really want to help and make sure that Phase Seven gets off the ground. So to that extent, thank you very much, Juanita and members of the Foundation Board, on behalf of the City Arts Commission and the Sculpture Garden Program. Thank you.
Well, if it weren't for volunteers, we wouldn't get a lot done around here. So it's very much appreciated. So we'll take a photo down here.
Arlene, you're gonna need a bigger purse.
Tell me where you want me to be.
In front of the flag.
Okay. Okay.
So every now and then, we have a very special recognition to make. And this is one of those times tonight, we're inserting this between SS Two and SS Three. And this is about our esteemed Assistant City Manager, Carol Jacobs. So we would be remiss if we didn't pause to recognize Carol for her six years of service to our community. Carol is leaving the city of Newport Beach to take a new position in the private sector, and we are certainly going to miss her. I should note that this is a surprise to Carol, as that we sneakily invited her husband, Tris Jacobs, to join us here today. And we were also happy that her daughter, Jillian, could join us as well. So I'm going to take a few minutes to express our appreciation for your many contributions to the city during your time here, Carol. And then I'll invite you to come down and receive a certificate, which is really nice. It's on my desk here. And since 2015, Carol has managed a variety of high-profile programs here at the city, projects and issues, working closely with all city departments, elected and appointed officials, and the community. She helped establish and manage the city's comprehensive response to homelessness with the city's homeless task force and created the homeless coordinator staff position. She worked closely on the city's partnership with Costa Mesa on a temporary homeless shelter, as well as future plans to build permanent supportive housing in Newport Beach. And I know personally, that's been a very important project for her. And Carol helped create the city's first harbor department and worked with Councilman Duffy and I on that and established the harbor master position. She worked closely with the harbor master to provide support and direction during the critical first years of establishing the new department. She also provided oversight to the Newport Beach Fire Department during a critical transition period and was instrumental in the acquisition and development of the city's first animal shelter. She was provided oversight and support to the Newport Beach Public Library, Information Technology, Municipal Operations, Public Information, and Finance Departments. She has been instrumental in helping departments revamp their structures and processes to improve service and efficiency. Carol has been a valued mentor to many, both in her role as Assistant City Manager and as a former president and board member of Women Leading Government, a nonprofit dedicated to women's leadership in local government. As busy as she is, Carol will always pause, lend an ear, and provide support or guidance when needed. The council, her coworkers, and many friends throughout Newport Beach will miss having her as an integral part of our city staff. We do wish you, Carol, the very best in your new endeavors, and I hope you will come back and visit us often. On behalf of the city council, please accept this certificate in recognition of your exceptional leadership and service to Newport Beach. All right. And now we have a discussion and review of the library lecture hall project. So I think we have a report?
We do. Good afternoon, Mayor, council. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director. Happy to bring this discussion back. I wanted to bring you a little bit up to speed where we left off on the library lecture hall. If you recall back in July of 2019, you formed a library lecture hall design committee in which Councilmember Dixon sits on that committee. And we have the president tonight, Ms. Tucker's with us, and she's going to be speaking a little later. Then again, in November of 2019, we had our first looks at the lecture hall, at which you gave staff some direction. We hired the consultant. The consultant here tonight, the architect is Bob Coffey, he's with us here tonight, too. And the direction at that time was for the staff to work with the consultant and the committee, the committee to come up and develop a conceptual design for you to look at and also bring back a memo of understanding based on some guidelines the council had given us at that time. Since then, we've been working on that. The committee's been working hard. They're going to share with you tonight the thoughts on how that looks. And then the foundation's with us tonight. Mr. Larry Tucker's also here representing the Library Foundation, wants to talk with you about some of the terms. So your council members who have been working on this, Mayor Avery and Councilmember O'Neil have been working on that, and they felt this item should come back tonight for your discussion, because there are some discussions in regard to the terms that the MOU is under. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and get the presentation going. We can bring that up. You'll recall for the audience, what we are talking about is potentially building a library lecture hall. And the site we're looking at is on the central library property, noted by the star there. And again, I just mentioned this, the formation of the library lecture hall design committee and the discussion we had back then. And we've been working through some of the slurs and various other elements. So at this point, though, I'd like to turn it over to Jill Tucker, who is, again, the chair of this committee, to give you an update on the status of the conceptual design. And Jill, there's a clicker right there for you.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Mayor Avery and members of the council. And I want to say, a little aside, Carol Jacobs was terrific assistance to some of us before we actually formed any of these library lecture hall groups to move the project forward. A few of us went on day trips to San Francisco and to San Diego to look at auditoriums and lecture halls at libraries up there. And she was more fun than a barrel of monkeys to have along, so I think she's gone. But anyway, pass it on that we sure enjoyed her and will miss her as well. So I'm here today as chair of the library lecture hall design committee. I've served in that capacity for two years, but prior to that time, I sat on the Board of Library Trustees, which is a city-appointed board that oversees the facilities for eight years. And we have many of the current board members here. And I'm also currently on the board of the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation, which is the fundraising organization. Over the past decade, the foundation has contributed more than $7 million to fund programs, technology, and services for the 1.2 million annual users of the four library As you may remember, our first task was to interview architectural firms, which had responded to the request for proposal. And after interviewing seven top-notch firms, the committee ultimately chose Robert Coffey and his firm RCA, who also designed Oasis Senior Center. So it's true, we have a design concept that we have approved, and as promised, we're here and excited to share it with you. Before we get into that, I'd like to remind the council, although we had a detailed presentation, so this will be brief, of the need for the lecture hall. It will complete the civic and library campus. And the need for programming, as you can see, is a growth area in libraries nationwide. And our library system is no exception. In 2009 and 2010, 28,000 people attended programs at the libraries. In 2018 and 19, that number had risen to 70,000. And of the six peer libraries that are in the state of California, which are those libraries that share a similar population and budget to our library system, we're the only one without an auditorium or a lecture hall, although I'd venture to say that we're probably the one with the most robust programming and great fundraising as well. As these slides demonstrate up ahead, our various programs need a better venue with great sightlines, better audiovisual, and a larger audience capacity. If you'll take a look, the one picture with the head is actually the real view of somebody sitting behind that woman. The one on the right is someone standing, taking a picture, both of them. You can see the next craning and the challenge of that friend's room, which serves great purposes for luncheons and book sales, but is not a great venue for programs. So let's start with the floor plan. And I've handed out one, we'll refer to that a few times. The first thing to point out is the location of the lecture hall was vital. It's important that it be located next to the courtyard so that outdoor space could be captured for receptions. And it also needed to be close enough to the offices of the library staff so that it could be opened and manned readily. The library staff, if you don't know, their offices are on the first floor off of the courtyard, just at the very top of the plan. And where it says "existing library," that's the friend's room. The location next to the friend's room is also vital, because it enables audiences to flow into the courtyard and even into the friend's room for pre- and post-event gatherings. And as you can tell, library staff is just a quick walk away. And here are a few images of what the courtyard will look like. It does dogleg around. We proposed to extend it an extra 10 feet over the bamboo, over avocado, so that we can make the courtyard larger. The structure that you see, that's kind of a block structure, those are the restrooms. So part of that extending over the avocado setback is to enable us to add the restrooms Next, I'd like to discuss some of the key points of the interior of the building. We had originally hoped the building would come in at around 7,000 or 8,000 square feet, but as you can see, it's closer to 9,500. Although the building will still have 275 fixed seats, as we originally envisioned, there are practical and regulatory reasons why the building grew. One is that the bathroom requirement exceeded what we expected. But the most important reason pertains to the sightlines. We had requested in the RFP that the seating area have the maximum allowable slope under ADA guidelines. And by that, I'm talking about, for instance, the slope here where you can get a wheelchair down through the aisles. But we'd also requested that the architects look into the idea of, if possible, having small steps between each row, so that sightlines would be completely unimpeded. After visiting a number of auditoriums, we determined that a slope could not be steep enough under the current guidelines to provide the best visibility from the seats. Now, you're raised on a dais, and so I think most people can see you, but typically a stage wouldn't, and people would be located closer. I sat behind Mr. Coffey, which, you know, he's quite tall, and some of the other members as we visited auditoriums. And when you merely have a slope, the sightlines can be quite impeded. Even though, you know, it's better than a flat floor, it's still not ideal. So in order to add the steps, which you can see in this picture, they're shallow steps, so you still have intimacy in the building. But that meant that we had to add access ramps and a small lift. So on either side of the building, you can see that there's a ramp that goes up and down on one side, and then there's a small lift on the other side. And ADA requirements also mandate that there's access to seating in the back, in the middle from both sides, and in the front. Adding these ramps and access points did add square footage to the building. But there won't be a bad seat in the house, and it would be a shame to build this space to correct the poor sightlines in the friend's room, only to still have mediocre sightlines. As you can see on your floor plan, the building has a small lobby. I don't know if you can see, it's right there. It's small enough, it's small and not large enough to fit all 275 audience members at once, which is why the proximity to the bamboo courtyard is crucial. But there's also gathering and mingling space at the back of the interior. And you can see that here. It's on, and there's a similar space on the other side of the AV booth. That'll add additional gathering space when people want to come in because of inclement weather. That extra area is also planned for up to 25 movable seats when necessary for an overflow crowd. Backstage in the building will be a green room and restroom for visiting speakers, a small amount of storage, including a closet where a piano can be rolled offstage and The exact materials that will be used for the exterior and interior are yet to be determined, but the committee hopes to see materials akin to and of a similar quality to the library expansion in City Hall. On the exterior, that could mean honed stone, aluminum composite panels, lap metal shingles, and sunshade louvers. On the interior, it would be wood-framed chairs, similar to these in the council chambers, perhaps, and pale wood acoustical walls, which serve audio purposes and are a beautiful design feature as well. This next slide is of the drive aisle. Traffic circulation in the library lot is not ideal, and we recommend addressing that now. We can change the circulation by changing the configuration of the entry from CDM Plaza. The addition of a drive aisle cutting through to the library entry allows for better circulation and also provides for the opportunity for a drop-off aisle at the library lecture hall These last few slides are of the exterior and of the landscape plan, and the exterior on avocado. It will have a rounded, undulating shape with a glass wall that is partially obscured by a design of vertical ribs. It's what Mr. Coffey calls "the fin design." The ribs may be directly perpendicular to the glass, as in this image, or perhaps angled inward to provide some sun protection, as in this one, although there will be shades in the interior that can be lowered when necessary. The exact design of the avocado elevation will be fleshed out a little bit more in the next phase, including the angling and the color of the fence. But the committee is pleased with the design. It achieves our goal, one of which was to have natural light to illuminate the building for daytime, and to have the building lit at night along avocado, so that passersby will be curious and want to know more of what's going on inside. There's the nighttime view, and natural grasses and specimen trees in the courtyard. So thus far, we've received approvals of other library boards, the Board of Library Trustees, and of course, the foundation. But most significantly, we've had several meetings with the Irvine Company, which retained the right of architectural approval on the property. The Library Lecture Hall Design Committee received a letter of approval from the Irvine Company on August 18th, so we're good to go with them. As the Library Lecture Hall Design Committee came to the end of the design process, we went back to the RFP to be certain we achieved what we'd hoped for. In addition to the guidelines laid out in the body of the RFP, we reviewed an addendum, Exhibit B, which we had, where we laid out all the things that we'd hoped to see in the design. After reviewing the exhibit point by point, the Library Lecture Hall Design Committee determined that, with the exception of the movable stage, which we decided wasn't a desirable feature after all, all the other needs had been incorporated into the design concept by RCA. So in conclusion, we're now seeking your approval of the concept design and seeking a vote to continue with the contracted services of architect Bob Coffey. We have a design that's beautiful and functional, and that we think fulfills the needs set forth in the RFP. We have the approvals required, other than yours, and we're ready to move on to the next phase. So, thank you. Before I introduce the next speakers, are there any questions that have to do with the design?
And if I could, Jill, I'm going to just clarify. Because we're in a study session, if you recall back in November of 19, the direction to staff was to develop the concept in the committee and bring that back for your approval, of which you're in a study session, so you can't formally do that. We will bring that back. There were a couple of conditions. One was the approval of the design, but that was supposed to come back with a memo of understanding, which Mr. Tucker will be talking to next. Of that, one of the points the council made is there's a $4 million contribution by the city committed to this point. I think that's part of the discussion. So at the end, we'll be looking to wrap that up. And if you're so direct, if you like the design tonight, this would be the time to make any comments. We will bring that back if we can get agreement for a formal approval, probably the next meeting or as soon as we can, just to frame it up. But at this point, I know the foundation would like to talk a little bit towards the MOU portion of this and get your input on that also. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you. Well, I would like to introduce my husband, Larry Tucker. There are three negotiators that are negotiating on behalf of the foundation. One is Karen Clark, who's the foundation chair and happens to be in Iceland right now. The other is Walter Starr, who's a board chair and just finished the manuscript for his most recent book. So it falls on the person who's here and most readily available, which is Larry Tucker, so.
Jill, hang on just a second. Jill, do you have any comments regarding the design?
Actually, my question was more for Dave about the building process. Do we have any sort of requirements that we utilize building supplies that are as local as possible? Or is there any, I mean, are we going to be bringing marble from Italy or anything like that for this design?
So under the sustainability elements of the building code, we tried a local source, but it really gets into what they would like to build. So if you want Italian marble, we surely can spec that. But that would be some comments from the council, if you don't want to go to that level. If you want to primarily do local source, we have Torrance marble, or if we can get something, we can do that. It all depends on what's available, too. A lot of things aren't made in foreign countries now, a lot of the machinery and the air-condition components and things like that. But if you want to try to do a buy-American policy or something, you'd want to give in that direction. That would be something the architect could probably, he'd have to work into it. But I will warn you, it may affect costs. So if you try to specify certain things that are maybe locally built and they're more expensive, and I don't know, maybe Bob can talk to that later, but...
One of my concerns, well, first of all, is about the planet as far as moving things from one side of the earth to the other, but it's also about those cargo ships that are out there. And wondering whether it's going to make our project take longer if we have to wait for them to be unloaded at...
And a good question. Right now, we do have supply chain problems, and we are hearing from our contractors, it's difficult. In fact, folks trying to build homes and things like that are finding things are not readily available, and it's lengthening the process. I'm guessing I'll talk about a schedule later. We have a long way to go before we're actually ready to bid this project, and we're hoping a lot of that supply chain might work itself out. So it does, you know, construction markets ebb and flow, and sometimes, right now, we're in a kind of a high spot, but maybe we'll hit a low spot and be able to get a good price on this. Those are all factors to come.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Jill.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Dave, this is another question for you. You had mentioned what we need to consider tonight in the study session. So it's to approve the design, that was the first item, and then the MOU. Is there a third? Could you just explain where we are? The council appropriated or approved the appropriation ultimately of the full design portion of the total cost, but we've only expended $200,000. Do you want to clarify, are we tonight to be asked to, by voice vote, I guess, to support our prior action to release the rest of those funds that we previously approved?
Yes. And what staff will be looking for? Some of that we can't approve tonight, because we're in a study session, we'll need formal approval. So what we're looking for tonight is any comments you have on the concept. The concept is, at the committee level, they have a concept now, they'd like to have you approve, and that's just a matter of a formal approval by council. The second item that we'll be talking about is probably the terms of the MOU, and I think the council members who are on that committee, along with Mr. Tucker, will be talking about that. And the third, there's another requirement that we do not move forward to design until the MOU is brought back for approval. And I think there's going to be some discussion on that. I think the foundation would like to seek your guidance in that. We, as staff, would like your direction, because that'll help us with the committee, where we're going. And at the end of it, you will be looking for your straw boat direction on that.
All right. Well, just to clarify, so tonight, if, I'm not aware that we have the MOU to talk about tonight, or it needs to be placed on a future council agenda. But if I understand, a key component of the ultimate agreement of the MOU is the total cost of the building, but we really won't know the total cost of the building until we go to the next step, the architect goes to the next step in the building design, because we only have concept.
Right.
So we would get a clear clarification of the total cost, total projected cost, that would be incorporated into the eventual MOU.
And I don't want to get ahead of it, but you're right on the point. Last time in November of 19, you saw a really tentative concept, and the concept that time was roughly about an all-in cost of $8 million. At that time, the council said, "We're willing to look at maybe putting $4 million into this project." And that's the terms that came back to staff and the committee at the time. Now, since then, we've got the concept sharpened, things have been added, and I think that's what they want to talk to tonight. We saw a concept, and just to note, at the end, you're going to find this is about a $12.7 million project right now, all in. That's based on the concept you saw tonight. So I think there'll be a discussion, the foundation would like to talk to you about. It's different than what we talked about in 19, but here's the reasons, and we feel we want to talk to you about some of the terms. From that, we'll look for a straw vote from you folks to give, obviously, your two council members who are working with the foundation need some guidance. I don't want to overstep and talk for them, but that's something, they need some guidance from you, so we can actually get the MOU to bring it back to you. It's not in a position where we can give you an MOU tonight.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Tucker.
Good afternoon, I'm Larry Tucker, and I'm assisting the Foundation. I'm not actually a negotiator, that's our Karen Clark and Walter Starr, since I'm not on the board, but somebody volunteered me to assist, so it's one of those offers that I couldn't refuse. Okay, so the status of the MOU negotiations and the fundraising, I'm just going to kind of, you know, go through the details from where the Foundation views things. You've heard the design information from Jill. So initially, the city prepared an MOU on this project, and it was, and this is my term, I'm sure the city thought it was fair and reasonable, I thought it was lopsided. But I'd spent many years processing projects, and I've observed over the years that anytime you're anywhere near something that involves kids, it usually works out better for the applicant. So we decided we will wait and see how the junior guard proposal came out, and it was pretty good. So we decided we'd switch gears and want to work off of the junior guard MOU. So that took a fair amount of time out of the schedule, and so finally, we had the MOU from the junior guards that was final. We revised an MOU based upon a lot of input from Karen and Walter, and May 10, we delivered that to the city, the MOU based upon the junior guards MOU. We had a meeting with Councilmember O'Neill and staff on August 4th to talk about the MOU. At that point, Councilmember O'Neill suggested that it would be appropriate to have a study session with the city council so that the negotiators weren't getting ahead of where the city council might be, which was, you know, something that we, of course, thought was a good idea, too. Councilmember O'Neill also wanted to make sure the approval of the Irvine Company wasn't placed before this matter was brought to the city council, because the Irvine Company has the right to approve or disapprove of the architectural plans, in their sole discretion, I might add. So now we have the approvals of everybody else other than the city council that's necessary for this project, meaning the Board of Library Trustees, the Foundation, and importantly, the Irvine Company. So it is the hope that the concept plan can be approved, and the MOU can be negotiated so the project can move on to the next phase, which will be fundraising and hopefully getting the actual working drawings completed. It's going to be important for donors to know that the cities, the deal with the city is done before we start raising money. Okay, now for the cost. The, so the lecture hall building itself was, actually came in about what we thought it would come in at, which was about $1,000 a foot at 7,000 feet, except for now, it's 9,500 feet, and Jill has explained why. $6,553 was the estimated cost of the building, and then there's a design contingency. Now, the design contingency cover, since it's a concept plan, the design's going to be fleshed out, and it's quite possible that the design might not be complete, and there may be things that need to be added. So there's a contingency on that for design. Where the real increase in cost came up was on the site work. And the, you know, the challenge with the library parcel was to find a location that actually worked, and the, before the Library Lecture Hall Design Committee, there were other committees that looked at other locations on the library lot. And some of those locations were like death to parking, they weren't close to the building, and as Jill mentioned, the library staff is right close by, and that happens to be really important for library programming, because the library staff keeps track of their time, actually bills the Foundation for helping out, because the Foundation is not set up for the occasional event. They have full-time employees, but they don't have full-time logistical types of employees. So it's very important where on the lot this particular building goes for staffing, as well as for something that fits, you know, you don't want it on the children's side where, you know, people can't really congregate over there. So it turns out, this is the optimal site, and the optimal site unfortunately doesn't always end up at the optimal cost levels to develop that site. In this particular case, there's significant underground relocations. I've got my instructions here to show the next slide, so I'll do that. So if you see the light red areas are utilities, underground utilities, that are in the way, and the dark red lines are the relocations of those utilities. There's a lot of underground work that needs to go on with this project. But once again, this is the location where the building needs to be, and it reminds me kind of City Hall of where, you know, you wouldn't want to put a building in a location that wasn't the best location in the long run. It was one of those types of decisions to look at this location. So back to the cost, significant underground work, grating and retaining walls come with that. There's only one orientation of the plan that really works. The site work includes reworking the bamboo courtyard into a functional space, which it's seldom used, lightly used, too lightly used, and it will be a lot nicer space and a lot better dimensions. And then the site work also includes carrying a poor circulation pattern that's existed at the library from the outset. Cost estimates, $2,219. Another design contingency for $205,000, for $2,425,000. Okay, then you have the soft types of costs, company-city types of projects, the design costs are $637. That's the contract that's already been let. And of that, $222,500 has been spent to get through the initial concept phase. And then construction management and administration, cost of testing, special instructions, just kind of a catch-all category. So there's another $1.5 million in those categories. So if you look at the total numbers, you know, the first three numbers I just went through, the subtotal is $10,217, and then the design number is there as well, and, you know, note the asterisk, $10,217 is for the building and site work. So once you've finished with the design part of the puzzle, and keep in mind that construction costs have accelerated since March of 2019, but once the project is designed, you bid the project, then those design contingencies that were in there earlier that are total $800,000, they go away because you actually have a bid. You actually are not, there's no longer a mystery about the design, it's actually done in its bid, but at that point, you need a construction contingency, and those are real. You know, those are, the cost estimates in advance are kind of a little bit unknown, you're kind of guessing. The construction contingency is not a guess. You're going to likely end up spending that money because contractors like change orders, maybe the unexpected conditions are hit, especially because we have underground work here. Plan clarification, city required changes, and changes that otherwise become apparent during construction. So, you know, the number that Dave referred to of another $1 million on top of the $11,755, that would include the construction contingency. So in a number of about $12,800,000, you have 20% between design and construction contingency. So it's a fair amount of contingency. The, the, I'll talk a little bit about the Foundation, but not much, because I really don't know that much about it, because I'm not a Foundation board member, but I do know that they have been a significant part of the history of this facility, especially the programming. This went from just kind of a regular library to a lot more because of the Library Foundation. So I think Jill mentioned they raised $7 million in the 10 years, the 10 pre-COVID years. They have full, three full-time employees, none of whom are employees of the city, and the money that was raised was all spent on basically programming or cash gifts to the library. $7 million in 10 years, that's a lot of money, and really, there's no other library institution that we're aware of in Orange County that has anywhere near the program, you know, that we have, and it's because of the Library Foundation. It's not something that the city spends any money on, other than providing the facility. So, you know, it's a big benefit to the city to have that $7 million being spent every year for our, over the course of 10 years, hundreds of thousands a year on programming. So the deal that the Foundation is proposing is a 50-50 deal, which effectively means a 50% discount. So just assume that $12,800,000, you get a $12,800 building for $6,400,000. And that's kind of a big deal, to have a lot of private money involved. It's something that would, I suspect, will help us in the future if we start having these types of fundraising efforts from our private sector, and our private sector, you know, we're lucky, they have money and they like this city. I mean, they could live just about anywhere, and they choose to live here. And there's a reason they choose to live here, it's because it's a great place, the weather, the harbor, but also all the facilities, in both private and public. And you see that investment all throughout town, and especially the last 10 years, you know, the private schools, the private clubs, the cities, you know, it's been dramatic. It's been a big change since, you know, those of us that have been here a long time, it wasn't always that way. I was a little bit sleepy, quite frankly, for quite some time. Not anymore. So the proposal, once again, is the same template as the junior guards. And, you know, this project, like the junior guards project, you know, the costs are up about 50% from where we started. They started at $3,303,000 and ended up at $4,909,000 plus another $400,000 for their parking, and, you know, our numbers jumped similarly. The size of their facility went up, as well as ours went up. And, you know, I think it is important to note that in order to have the fundraising that we need to have, we have to have a building that looks like it belongs in Newport Beach, just like the other buildings that the city has been involved with, you know, Marina Park, Oasis, the library expansion, City Hall. I mean, everything's been done as a quality project. And the good news for us is, is that the Foundation has hired a new executive director who has a lot of experience with capital campaigns, so that'll be something that we'll end up needing help with, but I'm, quite frankly, very optimistic. I mean, we, our expectation is there will be a naming right on the building, and being associated with the building that, so the quality of Bob Coffey has designed in a city like Newport Beach is something where we think that, you know, there'll be lots of naming rights, and we think that somebody will step up and help us get a long way into our fundraising. So the Foundation request is really twofold, which is to give direction to staff to proceed with the remainder of the design contract. So we spent about $222,000, we have a total of $637,000 that's already been allocated in the budget, and we'd like to see that money let, you know, let it be spent, and have Mr. Coffey complete everything through working drawings. The reason that's important is, is you can't, you don't really know what the costs are until you finish the working drawings, that you have something that's shovel-ready, which used to be a joke many years ago, when somebody else had a bunch of shovel-ready projects that weren't, and they weren't because they didn't have the building permits. So getting the building permits and having it biddable is something that we think is, you know, is really important. And then the other thing that we would like to see is direction to the council. We're not sure what directions Mr. O'Neill and Mayor Avery have in mind for the council, but give them those directions so that they can proceed, because we do need to get the MOU done so that we can get on with our fundraising. And I think the important thing is, I'm sure you all realize it, that they come back to you with their deal, whatever deal they make, and the council, of course, at that point, has the authority to approve, revise, or reject. So it's not like this is the end of the road, far from it. I think that is my part of the presentation, Dave, so if anybody has any questions about it, but once again, I'd like to see the other $400,000 released so that the design can be done, and then carry on with the negotiations of the MOU. And once again, just to stress, I know it's a lot of money, but it's half the price of an outstanding building that completes the campus here, and I think, I think we've found, and especially, most of you have sat on the finance committee at one time or another, three of you are currently on the finance committee, you know that residential real estate is the backbone of our budget. And every time one of these types of facilities comes up, you can't point to it and say it causes property values to go up, but you know intuitively that it does. And it's, you know, I know we're going to have a discussion, you're going to have a discussion potentially about wants and needs, but, you know, we have Marina Park, I don't know that that was really a need, and, you know, maybe Oasis wasn't really a need, but the reality is, is a lot of these wants that we've had through town start slowly like this one did, and they ultimately end up in a project, and that's what's made the city what it is today. That's what's distinguished it over the last 20 years from what it was in the first 25 years I was here. So I'm here to answer any questions now, or if you think of them later. Thank you.
Thank you.
So real quick, I'll just kind of sum it up there a little bit for you. Here's the cost estimates have today for the current building as it's basically conceptually designed. It's about $12.7, $12.8 million. There's how it lays out. And Mr. Tucker alluded to that. We do carry a 10% contingency in this. Granted, if we do a great job like we did on Oasis, and I want to tell Mr. Coffey that because I think we came in below 1%, that doesn't happen on all projects. I mean, things do happen. Italian marble does get more expensive, so, you know, those kind of things happen. But that, from a staff standpoint, from a city, we're responsible to you to make sure you know the full cost going in. If we're able to get to the point where the council is ready to approve the concept and the MOU, unless you want to change those conditions to staff, this is the schedule laid out right now. You probably have about eight months in design, we have a bidding process, about four months, and construction on this building will probably take about 24 months, so you're looking at 26 months when you say go to get this done. So I just want to let you know that. We're looking at direction. I'm going to turn over to Councilmember O'Neill, I think would be the best thing, because it's really about a policy discussion today and where we're at in this, so.
Yep. So let's go back a page, a slide. So this is, this is right around the time we, Brad and I said we should probably go back to council and talk. And we, so we've gotten actually quite a bit of work on the MOU done. We have a lot of, a lot of the issues pretty well hashed out, but we had $4 million of authority that came from the council, and we didn't have the authority to negotiate above that. And when we saw numbers coming in above that, we wanted to come back and talk to council about whether we wanted to continue down the path. If, for some reason, we did not, then we would need to, you know, the next question would be, continue the design anyway. But we needed to have the discussion up here because it was really important for our sake when we were negotiating the MOU to know that we continue to have authorization from council to do so. And so on the, you know, on the money aspect of things, to Mr. Tucker's point, part of the question has been whether to go with a half, whether the council wants to provide us a specific amount that's capped out in the MOU. These are things that you don't have to tell us right now completely. I mean, you could tell us half, and we could go back and negotiate half, and then it would come back later at a council meeting, to Mr. Tucker's point, where we would be able to have that discussion and come to, you know, reject, revise, accept. And then to Ms. Dixon's point, you know, we would have a better sense of it at the end of the design phase, certainly no guarantees, just given where construction is, but we'd have a pretty good sense at that point also. So you can see, we didn't, we just... So, you can see, we didn't, we just didn't want to make these policy decisions at a two-member ad hoc level. We'd like to talk to you about that. It is also important to have that. So, basically, we need two things from this council today. We need to have a sense of whether the cost increase is absorbable, in terms of, can we, should we still continue to move forward with the project? And if so, then we would continue down the path of discussing the MOU. And then, we also, because we haven't brought the MOU back to council yet, because we needed to continue to have the discussion about the authorization, we haven't brought back, obviously, the, was it the concept design approval? Is that what it was?
That'd be next concept design, and we have not started the design of the project yet.
Right. And so, so that's the, so that's the, that's what we also needed to talk about today, was whether the council's comfortable moving forward with the design cost, because they're not insubstantial. I mean, we're looking at another $400,000 without having the MOU in front of you. And so, those are the two that we really need to make sure we talk about today, get direction from the council, and, you know, and get to there. So, it's probably fair to, since Brad and I have been living with this longer than the rest of the council, it's probably fair to give my thoughts on, you know, where we are and where we probably should, ought to go. This is, so, I knew Larry was eventually going to get to the need-to-have, nice-to-have, because that seems to be what I always talk about, and he knew I was going to do that. So, you know, there is a major difference when we're talking about projects between the need-to-haves and nice-to-haves, because the need-to-haves are things like fire stations, so we're obviously rebuilding a fire station right now. We are continuing to look at that. Eventually, we have to do the police station. We also, obviously, continue to need the roads to be maintained and repaired. We also need to ensure that, unfortunately, we have our enterprise funds for this, but our water and sewer lines, I mean, those are, these are all the need-to-haves that must happen. And then, on the nice-to-haves, it's pretty much everything else. And I will say, though, and this is, I may need to come up with a new category, because there probably needs to be a nice-to-have plus, because when you have this much community buy-in and this much community support, especially on the financial side of things, it's tough to, it's tough to say no. It's tough to say that this is, you know, it's more than a nice-to-have. It's ramping up, because you actually have seen this. We also need to look at our financial picture right now as a city, and realize that over the last two years, it was pretty volatile. And so, one of the, and one of the issues that we were trying to understand is how to ramp down on expenses, because we were concerned about what we would be seeing in terms of the revenues. So, we were really fortunate to be able to ramp down on the expenditures very quickly. And then, on the revenue side, we were fortunate to see revenues coming in, you know, less than they would in a normal year, but more healthy than we would have expected. And then, we were also fortunate to receive some federal money that we didn't anticipate when we were doing this, which means that we have a lot of, we're going to have some one-time money set aside. It's really important, just to, you know, put that in context. And I know I'm speaking a little long here, but it's worth recognizing that when you're dealing with projects like this, it's not short, and it's not an easy discussion, and it's worth just kind of laying foundation for why we're having this conversation. But the, when you have a lot of one-time money available to you, it's really important not to take on additional expenses that are going to be year over year. I know that sounds obvious, but there are a lot of cities that don't do the obvious. Unfortunately, Newport Beach has for quite some time. So, we don't need to take debt on in order to afford this building, even at the expanded amounts, especially if it was at 50%. And so, the one-time money is there for this project. The one-time money is there for the Junior Guards, and the money, one-time money is there for, to fund, so far at least, our, you know, the projects we really need to be taking on as well. And so, we do need to do a better job going forward of setting aside money for some of the projects. I know we've got Babo Island drainage issues that we're going to be needing to work through, but when you look at the overall financial picture for the next five, 10 years, if you have a project with this much community support behind it, willing to pay 50% of a, you know, potential $12.7 million project, I think you need to take a strong look at it. And so, I think that, I don't say this lightly, I think everybody up here kind of knows that sometimes people get sent to me so that I can say no to financial projects. And I think council members are laughing, because they've all done that at one point or another. But it's not a small thing for me to be saying that I think we ought to move ahead with the project, even though it has come in, you know, fairly substantially higher than the, our original estimate, that when we had talked about it back in '19. In part, because this really is one of those things. I remember, I think back in '19 or '20, I can't remember. I know there was a book that had come out by Eric Kleinenberg, that had been called "The Palaces for the People." And in there, he talked about social infrastructure and the necessity, and the need to make sure that people are coming together, and, you know, having shared conversations, shared dialogue. Because when you start losing the, that shared communication and the shared discussions, you know, when you, when you, when you break those bonds, we see what happens. We saw what happened last year. And it's really important to continue to try to invest in that social infrastructure. And so, this is, this is a great project. It's got some, you know, it's got some distance between now and when it'll be completed, but that's the fun part. That's, that's the work, because if it was as easy, you wouldn't enjoy it as much at the end of the day. So, I do think we ought to keep moving forward. I do think we ought to, you ought to at least give me, give Brad and me the authority to have half and bring this back. The question would be a cap. I'm not sure we need to address that right away, but we do need to at least, I need to, do need to at least throw that out there. And then, in terms of the design cost, this does feel a little like chicken and egg, and this is something I've been trying to wrestle with for the last three or four days, because if we move, if we move forward with the design cost, the question is, do we need to, do we, this is, this is my concern about the 50% versus a cap. The concern I've got is that if we go through the design cost, then 50% is easy, because we'll know what the design, what the estimate will be. And we wouldn't need a cap, because we can just do 50%. If we don't have the design done before the MOU's done, then we don't actually know exactly how much it's going to be. And I'm, it's tough for me to come to you and ask for kind of a, it's not quite a blank check. I think we would be within the percentage. So, I'm struggling a little bit with that. I don't have a good answer for that, so that's why I wanted to kick that out there and at least show my, my thought process, because I don't know how to, I don't have a great recommendation on which we should do first, the design or the MOU. I know we'd be doing them dual-track, but I just need to know, should we try to finish the design first and get the MOU done immediately afterward? Because then, we'd have a really good sense of it. I don't know. So, that's why I wanted to at least throw that out, because I'm not sure either. Thanks.
Thank you. I concur with Councilman O'Neill's comments. I think there's, it's a great time to do this, in terms of, the economy's been strong, our revenues are strong. And anytime we get a great project at a 50% off tag, I think that's exceptional, that we have that kind of support in this community for it. And Will's comments about bringing people together, this is one of those projects that definitely brings people together, and does more than that, because if you look at the authors that have come and presented at the Witty Lectures, it's extraordinary that we have these folks coming to town, and residents have a chance to hear them, and at the same time, be with hundreds of their fellow residents and have discussions. So, it's definitely more than the sum of its parts. It's, it's an extraordinary project, in my view. And it does complete what we call now the Civic Center, and it makes this more of a place where people gather, whether it's Sculpture Garden, and the library, Lecture Hall, people gathering at night in the council chambers, the community room. So, it's, it, to me, it really fits, and a lot of effort's gone into this, and a lot of thought, and we can see that. So, I'm, I'm a fan. And I wouldn't be supportive if I felt, looking at, I mean, I just feel that we're, we're strong enough as a city to take this on, given our revenues. And, but, it won't be easy from the standpoint, I know Mr. Webb has a long list of priority items that are really needs, need-to-haves. And so, you know, that's going to be constantly looked at, I think, going forward here and distilled. So, that bogey's out there. My other concern is, and I've got to think that overall, this building, if it's programmed right, should pay for itself in terms of maintenance. I think just, we need to understand completely what the long-term cost of the city is to have this building there. We're providing, the city's providing the land, and my understanding is the city will own the building. That's correct. And the programming will, the city will largely be involved with the programming. And I know, for instance, the Witty Lectures are fairly repeatable, year after year, the times they're given, and so, the opportunities for more programming. I guess what I'm saying is, I'd just like to see it obviously maxed out in terms of usage, bringing people together, but also generating revenues through creative and inspiring programming that creates some cash flow, that'll help keep the additional windows to this civic center washed and paid for, and not add to the load we have already. But I commend the foundation members, all those that have contributed so far, all the intellectual capital that's gone into it. Getting the Irvine Company behind it is a good sign. So, I hope my fellow council members can see that, and I think they do. But it is, it gives you pause, when you're up here, to sort of begin to commit to something like this, because the future's not certain all the time. So, but right now, I can't think of a better time in terms of where we are as a city, and the strengths that we're exhibiting. So, I think strike while iron's hot, because things could be very different down the road. Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. As I'm sitting here, listening to both the mayor and Mr. O'Neill, I'm thinking back to when this discussion started many years ago. When I first joined the council in 2014, '15, and the idea of the Corona del Mar February was, we don't use that term, library fire station. And my colleague, Ms. Brenner, was out in the audience as a passionate citizen, making the case, which she obviously made successfully. And that too, I began to use the term, because it's very comfortable for me to use the term coming out of corporate America, if you will, of public-private partnerships. And I think, and I believe strongly, that communities are stronger when the public and the private community come together for a common goal. And the Corona del Library Fire Station was the beginning of the realization of the benefit of private contributions, of which there were significant. And as this project has been going forward now for the last seven years, with the determination and passion and intellectual commitment that we're seeing with the foundation, and the current Board of Trustees has supported this concept as well, it's a magnificent opportunity for the city of Newport Beach, the community at large, to embrace its library in ways that they already are. I mean, one of your statistics, Joe, what is it? How many thousands of people now are visiting our library every day? 10 years ago, it was 28,000, now it's 70-something thousand?
Just to come to a program, that's not yet.
Yeah. But, and just from the library, the Central Library of Newport Beach is renowned for its recognition by the state of California in being an outstanding library that serves its community. And Mr. Starr is here, and his parents were instrumental in the, in the original Central Library that we are seeing. And to continue to build on that legacy of why this community is as strong, as Mr. O'Neill says, the, the social equity that we have in our community to support the cultural icons that are important, that actually serve a functional purpose, this isn't just a feel-good, looking-good building. So, as a member of the committee, and my role was to be a member, but also, I felt my own role was to protect the taxpayer's role, and the role of the council's point of view, that we had committed to at the time, an 8 million total cost project, and that's what we're talking about, that increase tonight. And I have, I want to commend the foundation and the committee, and the architect, Mr. Coffee, was always cognizant that we were dealing with a fixed amount that the city council had committed to, and the total community could absorb. And so, there, I could assure you, Ms. Brenner, I don't think there's any Italian marble in this building. It is functional, and the materials are quality materials, and they obviously conform to the, the design aesthetic of the Civic Center. And I don't know whether they're imported or domestic, but the point is that they are as close to being value-engineered as I think we possibly can. I think, as Ms. Tucker explained about the additional costs that are regulated, in terms of ADA access, et cetera, that added an additional space. But to continue, just to go on to, I want to compliment the committee and the foundation board, that unanimous support for this project, because they know the value that it brings to the community. And again, at a 50% discount, we'd be foolish not to accept, accept the benefits and the tangible equity that this is going to be bringing to our entire community and the expanded programming. The foundation and the committee have worked very hard on this. It's been seven long years, we're still not done, but we're getting close. I remember when Jill and I first talked about this, like, five years ago, could it be done in a couple of years? And we're getting close, but this, and I explained to Jill at the time, why projects like this, that involve public-private partnerships, take a long time. And so, we really are stewards of taxpayer money, and we want to absolutely be careful with your money, and to be sure that we do the right things. And I think going forward with perhaps some funds that have come in from the federal government, and, and some good financial management by the city, there may be some one-time funds that we could look at, that are one-time funds, that can provide the difference. The other day, when I was talking with Jill about this, and Larry, about how we would all, the private and the public, make up the difference of about the $2 million, and, actually, more, about $4 million, but $2 million per party here, Jill did not even blink about the fundraising challenge that the foundation has now going forward. I mean, you swallow it hard, and you said, "We're going to try to do it." And this community has dug deeply for their, for their library, and I'm very confident that they will continue to do so, and the city will do its part. What I'd like to ask the mayor and Mr. O'Neill, as I said earlier in the meeting, I would like, my personal opinion is, I would like to release the funds, so they could, we could move forward, and, because it takes, Mr. Coffee, how long will it take to get the final design?
Eight months.
Eight months, so to get that moving. How long would it take, really, do you think, to reach the final MOU?
You ever negotiated with Larry Tucker?
[laughing]
It's a process.
So, not too long?
It's a, no, no, it's a process. No, I, I don't, I don't know, not, I don't think very long.
I mean, as far as, I would support, if there was a show of hands to support, moving forward with the release of those funds, or maybe incrementally, just to start it, maybe another $200,000, just to keep it going. But if we knew that the MOU was coming shortly, then maybe...
Oh, it'd come much sooner than eight months. I mean, it'd probably come within the next 60 days. The...
60 days, you say?
Oh, yeah, less, probably less. But I think, I think we could bring it back by, by one of the meetings in November at the latest. On the MOU side, we've done most of the legwork. That's why I'm saying, if we want to move forward with the, if we want to move forward with the MOU before we get done with the design, and have a really good firm grasp of what the cost we think would be, which probably wouldn't even honestly happen until we had the bidding anyway, then we probably, you'd probably want us to negotiate a 50% deal. But just understand that if you did... a 50% deal. But just understand that if you did, if we did a 50% negotiation without a cap-
Well, or a cap not to exceed, and then we come back to the council if, if we need to.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we're trying to seek from, from council on this, on this discussion tonight. That's, that's what we need to know, in order to have, we just need additional authorization. We just don't have enough in our authorization. So we need additional authorization. If it's a cap, it's a cap. If it's 50%, and then, you know, we can work it out, fine. But I just, we need to know what, what the, what our authorization would be from council.
Okay. Well, I will, I know, obviously, we'll proceed with the rest of the meeting, but I am completely supportive of moving forward with a 50-50 project. There probably should be, just for purposes of just being mindful of not full escalating costs, some kind of a cap not to exceed, maybe, to be determined. But I would be supportive of moving forward, and moving forward to resolve the MOU. But I was thinking that if we could just do another incremental installment on the design costs, just so you could begin on next week, or whenever it takes just to get that started, if there's an amount that makes sense, just to keep things tracking. And Jill, I hope we get this done within eight years of you initially starting this. I think we're still faster than the federal government, though. I'm just grateful that we have the broad and deep community support for this. How can we say no? And that the due diligence that's gone into keeping this a functional lecture hall, it's not grandiose. I hope it wins an architectural award, but it really will be the most functional lecture hall. There's been no grandiose additions to the design. It's a lecture hall. It's not a musical theater. I mean, we went through this at the committee level. What is it, what's the scope? And the scope never expanded. And I'm very proud of that. Your leadership, Jill, was, was outstanding for this. The scope is a lecture hall, not a performance hall, not a music concert symphony hall. This is a lecture hall to meet the needs, the existing current needs of our community. So with that, I would like to go forward, and we'll decide in the course of the study session tonight, how we authorize that. But my idea is to go forward, if we could authorize some additional funds to get the final design moving forward, that, fine. And then encourage Mr. O'Neal and Mayor Avery to come back to us as soon as possible with the final MOU within those constraints. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner?
Jill, I had a question about the new executive director. Have we announced who that is yet? And can you, and can you tell us a little bit about the experience?
Well, oh, he says you've met. It's Gerald Koppel, Jerry Koppel. And you want to come and, can he come and say a few things about himself? I mean, he's, he's done fundraising all over the place. And, and our last two directors weren't as excited. I think he really wants to get moving on the fundraising end of things, don't you?
I'm a certified fundraising executive. I've been managing nonprofits for over 40 years. And I can tell you, I can speak with a little experience on what the impact of this structure will be. I ran the cultural tourism initiative set on the Travel Industry Association Board after the White House Conference on Travel and Tourism in 95. And the figures that, this is the travel industry that came up with this research, not us cultural folks. What the travel industry came up with is that a new building like this, attracting people from all over the county, trust me, it will attract people from all over the county, especially as striking a design as it is. And as the mayor said, having really full usage of it. This is not a capital improvement, this is a capital investment. And the city will have a return on it. That is real and will be quantifiable. Yes, this will be my eighth capital campaign. And, and I think that the community's behind it, the foundation's behind it, the trustees are behind it. And here's the thing. This library is such a significant institution and value to the community, like no other library in this county. Like very few libraries I've ever known in my career. They have the number of people come through it, and its services that it provides. So an investment in the library and its programs will pay off for the city. I can guarantee you that. And yes, I look forward, I look forward to the MOU, and I look forward to the final design, because I don't like to sit in front of a donor and say, well, it could be this, it could be that. No, we need some, we need some solid figures, we need some solid designs, we need a really solid agreement with the city, and I'll sit down with anyone. Thanks.
Welcome. And I just know that you're going to have some great partners in our foundation members that are going to help you achieve this goal, so it probably won't be as hard as it might be otherwise. And I also wanted to say to Mr. Coffey, I love the design. It is just gorgeous. And I loved, I love Oasis, so I'm not surprised that I love this one as well. So, but I just wanted to say one more thing. I just got back from a League of Cities meeting, where there are almost all but four cities in California belong to this group. And, you know, we've spent a lot of time over the last almost two years listening to complaints, and people being upset, and people being outraged. And I am really excited about this project, because I think we're going to be able to get back to gratitude in our community, and focus on the positive things that we're doing, and the, the positive contributions that we're making. And when I go out and see other cities, they're lovely cities, and, and it's very nice, but there's no place like Newport Beach. We are so extremely blessed to have the vision, and also have the people in our community, and the committee, and the foundation board, and people that are just so invested in a project like this. And I think it's going to be a really positive step, coming from the negativity of the pandemic, to the positivity of being able to do something like this for our community that will just be outstanding. So, great job, everyone.
Thank you. Do we have any other council comments? Seeing none, do we have any members of the public that wish to come forward and speak to this?
It's, it's tough to add to Team Tucker. And by the way, at the top of that building, if you saw the name Tucker, that would be, that would be unbelievable. I'm Paul Watkins. I'm a current chair of the Board of Library Trustees. And spoiler alert, I'm in favor of the library lecture hall. And why is that? Well, about 10 years ago, when then-mayor Hen was addressing the group at the Speak Up Newport Mayor's Dinner, he said, "The city is the shining city on the hill." Remember that? Shining city on the hill. From Newport Coast to West Newport, the shining city on the hill. And it's been said that this project will complete the library campus, and in fact, the Civic Center. And I think that's accurate. But more importantly, the shining city on the hill will add prestige and reputation, and bottom line, to this great city. This is not a project of the Board of Library Trustees. This is not a project of the foundation. Although the foundation adds so much to the fabric of this city with the Woody Lecture Series, Library Live, and other great programs. And of course, as indicated, it'll be the private fundraising arm for, for 50% or more of the, of the cost of the facility. Ronnie and I have not traveled a whole lot in the past year and a half. But when we did travel, and we'd get back to this city, invariably, we would say, what the heck? Why did we take this trip? We have the best beaches, the best facilities, and really, the best people in the world, right here. So I live here, you guys live here. Long after we're gone, this great facility will continue to inspire the best of Newport Beach. So please support the action that's been discussed, and move this project forward fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Just the library, Mr. Mayor, or general public comments yet?
Just the library. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Walkie Ray. My wife Janet is on the committee, so you probably won't be surprised to learn that I'm supporting the project. Moreover, and for what it's worth, I've been on a lot of capital committees, including the Discovery Cube in Santa Ana, and the Orange County School of the Arts in Santa Ana also. And I, I think the, the fundraising here on the private side is a no-brainer. I think it's, it's, it's an easy touch. So if you're concerned about that, as I would be, I think you, you shouldn't be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and council. My name's Dorothy Larson. I'm the past chair of the Library Foundation, and I promise to make it quick. I just have one comment. It's been on my mind the last, I don't know how long. Several years ago, it seems like our educational system decided arts were a want instead of a need. And I keep reflecting on that every time Mr. O'Neal mentions that there's things that are nice to have, and things that we need to have. And while this might seem like an overstatement, I think this city needed the junior lifeguard's improvement, and we need this lecture hall to continue elevating the profile of our city culturally, as we have been. And also, just for the record, we are stewards of nonprofit money. So to your point, Diane, we are as concerned, just so you know, about how the money's spent, as the city would be, because we also have a fiduciary responsibility to our donors. So I really urge you to move it forward. I think it's going to be an amazing improvement, and, and just a wonderful enhancement to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the library and the lecture hall? Okay, seeing none?
Yeah. So I needed, I, I think we need, we need three things. The first one is authorization to negotiate the, at the higher amount. And I'll get to my suggestion in a second. The second is, we would still need Mr. Webb to bring back the concept design for approval. But the third thing is, whether we would need, whether we want to move forward with the design before we had the concept approval approved at the, at the council level. So, taking each in turn. Am I missing anything, Mr. Webb?
No, I was only going to say, if you, if you want to give any comments on the concept you saw tonight, so we can make any minor adjustments, we'll bring that concept back if that so desires, along with a CECO that needs to be approved at the next convenient moment. But I was looking at any comments, if you had any issues with the design tonight that you saw.
No, if the Irvine Company is fine, we're fine.
Works for me.
The, so, on the first one, I'd like to, I can't help it, I really would like to at least have some kind of cap on this. But the cap can be above the number, and just a little bit of a wiggle room. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have authorization to negotiate at a 50-50 with a cap at 6.5 million, which puts us slightly above the preliminary cost estimate. If we need to come back, we can come back. But that number is fairly high. And I think we, I think the estimate, I think the guess is probably that it's going to end up being less than that, and perhaps much less than that. But we'll see. But that's what I'd like, the authorization on that front. And then on the, on the design, I think all, all in all, I think we reached a negotiate, I think we reached a deal on the MOU. So I think we ought to, if, if we have the authorization at the number that I just described, well, I think we reach a deal on the MOU, and therefore, I'd be fine moving forward with the design costs before we get the, before we get there. So unless there's a lot of discussion up here, I think we should probably just move to, to those two items. The first one is the, the authorization that I just asked for, and the second is the, whether to move forward with design. I don't, I'm, frankly, I'm at the point where I, I'm not sure that it matters whether we do it in a seriatum approach, or with a designer, we just say, go, go for the full amount. Because if we have the authorization for the amount that I just described, I think we ought to just move forward with the design. So, anyway, unless there's more council, I think, discussion, I think we probably should do a straw poll on those two items separately.
Okay. Or the design?
I have to do a verbal-
The first, I think the first one, I need, I think the authorization's more important. If we don't have the-
Six point five?
Fifty-five with a cap of 6.5. But if we don't, if I, if we don't have that, then the design-
Right.
Gets harder. So we should do that one first. It's Mr. Blom. I just want to make sure that, because he raised his hand.
I am here. I'm good. Yes. I am in agreement with that.
Okay. All right. Then let's go ahead with the first authorization on, at the 50-50, at a 6.5 cap for the city.
6.5 million cap. Okay. Councilmember Blom?
I'm in agreement with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Duffield?
No, I'm kidding.
Oh, okay. Councilmember O'Neal?
So are you a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
He's a yes. Councilmember O'Neal?
I'm a yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Muldoon is currently absent. And Mayor Avery?
Yes.
Okay, so that's six zero one.
Okay.
And then the second one is the-
Is the design?
Yeah.
Councilmember Blom?
I'm in agreement with the design.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Duffield?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Muldoon is, Mayor Pro Tem Muldoon is currently absent. Mayor Avery?
Yes.
So that's six zero.
Well, that's, it's a good outcome.
Could I add one thing? I wanted to say, I wanted to say thank you for those steps to make the incline greater, because sometimes I sit behind someone like Mr. O'Neal, and it will make that much easier to see. So thank you.
We still will have the intimacy of removal.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Now it's time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Philip Beckort, Mr. Mayor, and city council members, and I will be brief, one, to salute the council, certainly for the action taken on the library lecture hall. And I've been a Newport Center resident of this building for 30-plus years. It's going to be a great neighbor. Secondly, I want to salute the city manager and her newsletter for the participation in the coastal cleanup day. I've been in any number of those, but I think she sees the promise for a, a more advanced structured campaign for all public properties going forward. And finally, once again, for the 1-1 Marines, to remember that special relationship that they have had with the city family. And I'm recalling our former mayor and great friend, Steve Bromberg, United States Marine. But any number of folks have, have participated in that process. I attended a funeral in our, in our adopted city of La Quinta, for a corporal who was among that group. So that's a special relationship at a special time of life, and I salute you for your service and all that you do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Beckort? Any other public comment on agenda and non-agenda items?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Joe Angelo. I live at 1504 West Oceanfront on the peninsula. And I'm going to address the council this afternoon on the safety of the boardwalk on the Balboa Peninsula. I've discussed this item with Diane Dixon for a couple of years. I've discussed this item with Diane Dixon for a couple of years, and the council may remember in this building next door here, about two or three years ago, there was approximately a two-hour analysis of the safety of the boardwalk. And specifically, we're talking about bicycles, pedestrians, number one, pedestrians, then bicycles, then electric bikes, skateboards, electric skateboards. I don't know what quite to call that vehicle where there's a driver and a passenger behind, but they rent those and now they're frequenting the boardwalk. And for whatever reason, whether it's just times are good or COVID, the peninsula is more crowded than it used to be. The boardwalk, my humble opinion, is four times more crowded than it used to be. And I live at 1504 West Oceanfront. I've lived there for 25 years. I've been in Newport for 40 years. Times have changed, and we need to do something. We're talking about the safety of Newport Beach. And I listened to the comments regarding the library. This is a great city, and the boardwalk is a, is a great boardwalk. The beach is a beautiful beach. This is a great city, Newport Beach. But what's going on on that boardwalk, and I'll pat myself on the back for a second, I might be one of the, one of 50 people who knows what's going on the boardwalk more than, than others. I live there. The house I live in has a three-foot setback. It's an older home, and it's three feet from the boardwalk. I can, I could high-five people going by my living room. So specifically, what we have there is a 12-foot concrete sidewalk. It has a yellow stripe right down the middle, which means we have six feet on each side. And if you just imagine two people walking, that's about five feet. Two people walking the other way is about five feet. You have maybe a foot or two of leeway. And if you have two people walking west, two people walking east on that boardwalk, and a bike wants to pass those people, they're going to go right through the middle, throw in a skateboard, throw in one of those vehicles that you have a person in the front and a person in the back. I ride the boardwalk on my bicycle, and I walk the boardwalk every day. And it's just an accident waiting to happen. And I discussed with Diane about four weeks ago, an electric bike knocked two people, age 65, right off the boardwalk, right into the sand. The lady laid in the sand for 45 minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Ultimately, they took her to the emergency room at Hoag.
Sir, how much more time do you need?
One minute, or should I stop?
Now, if you've got a point to make, and I understand, we hear you, but, yes, go ahead.
The point, the point to make, I would like the, the city to ban electric bikes on the boardwalk, number one. I would like the city to enforce skateboard use on the boardwalk. You have volunteers, I've spoken to the volunteers every week. They make notes when skateboards or electric bikes go by too fast. They turn those into the police department. So I'm just talking about safety, just safety for pedestrians. This accident I told you about, the fellow behind said, well, those people shouldn't have been walking on the boardwalk. He said those people shouldn't be walking on the boardwalk? I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, and thank you for taking the time to come down and speak.
You bet. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers, Denise Oberman. I wasn't here to comment on the issue brought up by Joe Angelo, but I'm just going to reiterate, there are well over 50 people who are aware of the safety problem on the boardwalk. And there are well over 50 people that have been hit and have had problems associated with accidents and near accidents. So something needs to be done. It doesn't need to be studied. We do need to ban electric bikes just by virtue of the volume. Certainly, we need to regulate speed, and there need to be very clear consequences for reckless, whatever you're doing, on the boardwalk. And the ambassadors have submitted record, and we talk to them on a regular basis. They're doing a good job of observing and collecting data, but they don't have any enforcement power, and certainly they can't run after, when they're on foot, an electric bicycle or anybody speeding along at 20, 25-plus miles an hour. So please act on this. Safety has been brought up more and more, and as a city, as we have more people and we have more visitors, the issue of safety to preserve this environment is becoming, it's not a non-negotiable, it's a must-have to have a good safety program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name's Michelle Rosenthal, and thank you for your time. I live on Indus Street, Newport Beach, and I am one of the neighbors representing our community, and we're actively looking to get our item on your next city council agenda. We live in the neighborhood where one of the homes, where we have an over-concentration of sober living homes and treatment facilities, where one of the people escaped and was murdered in the neighborhood, shot and killed in the neighborhood when he invaded another home. I think our city's very, very disappointed in the lack of support we've received thus far, and we have still seen the facility where the person came from in operation. There's no been, there has not been anything from the city of Newport Beach to cease or, or halt any of their operations and their business. I haven't seen one black-and-white police vehicle drive through our neighborhood and check to see the well-being and safety of our neighborhood. But I think the most important thing that we need to emphasize is there's two unlicensed facilities operated in our neighborhood that have been overlooked for many years. They're not on the state board, and they're not on the city board holding any sort of permit. I think some of the things that we had found from the Costa Mesa City and the Newport Beach city laws are not all quite lining up, so I'm really, really pleading to you, basically to, to help us. From the DHCS website, it specifically states on here that additional facilities may be subject to other types of permits, clearances, business taxes, or local fees that may be required by the cities or communities or counties in which these facilities are located. You may want to check with your county alcohol and drug program, et cetera. What I need from you today is, one, to hopefully be on the agenda item next time we have a city council meeting, and two, to find some tighter ordinances to put on these facilities, at least as a step from the city of Newport Beach, to protect the people that are going to these facilities, and have some guidelines for the facility operators to operate them more properly, and then to also look at the over-concentration and find a way to protect the neighbors in our, in our community. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Councilmembers, mayor's staff. So first of all, thank you for your service. I just wanted to bring to your attention that on Wednesday, September 8th, the Ninth Circuit of the Court of Appeals ruled that the city of Costa Mesa sober living ordinances are not discriminatory and do not violate the Fair Housing Act. This validates the federal jury decision in 2018 that upheld the city laws. These laws were actually modeled in large part on the efforts of the concerned citizens of Newport Beach prior to Newport passing its ordinance. So Michelle Rosenthal is asking for ordinances. I would say we have ordinances. What the residents of Newport, live at Indus, whom I've listened to, are looking for is action. What I'm looking for is action, empathy, and engagement. I'm talking about a specific issue where the city has cause and should pursue an action against Miramar Recovery to investigate it for fraudulent ownership operation in violation of State Code 9ADC 10527, which is the requirement for new applicant for licensure. So this is the code, if anyone would care to read it. Derek Bryan is listed for the rehabs at Miramar Recovery at 435 and 435 and 1/2 as the licensed owner of two rehabs, which he operates as six and under licensed facilities with the characteristics of an integral facility. This was affirmed last year in November 20 by the state DHCS, that they are acting with the characteristics of an integral facility, but I've not been able to get any information from DHCS about their plan to enforce. Since 2020, so this law says that only the owner on the license can operate a facility. This website says that Tom Sauer, a veteran, is the owner of Miramar Recovery. I've had, it's on Facebook and multiple locations. He was interviewed by Hugh Hewitt, stating he was the owner. The vendor who did their pest control told me last Friday that Tom Sauer is their owner. So either Tom Sauer is, has been granted fraudulent conveyance of ownership of this operation, or there's fraudulent advertising. Both of those are actionable. This is not Laura Curran doesn't like the noise next door, which is a whole nother set of actions. This is actionable, and the city has a responsibility to follow through and ensure that we investigate this. And I filed my own complaint, but the city needs to file its own complaints and to file through with DHCS if they, and ask for satisfaction. And if they don't get satisfaction, they should also investigate with a state audit to find out what DH is spending, or DHCS is spending our money for. We spent, EDD spent a billion dollars giving unemployment claims to prisoners, so I'm really starting to wonder if they're even capable of providing enforcement and oversight, and if the city should be encouraging the state to move this to the Department of Social Services, which manages every other group home application. So that's the main issue. And again, also, Mr. Sauer states that he has an integral, he has one center, which has multiple locations. This is integral. So the city code does not allow integrals in R2s, so I ask that the city contact Miramar and ask Miramar if they're integral, if they are operating as one center.
Thank you, Ms. Curran.
Let the city pursue the action and save the residents the effort and the heartbreak of losing confidence that they are actually being protected. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, city council. I'm Linda Delaney, and I am here to talk to you all. I've spoken with Will O'Neil and Joy Brenner, and we are here to discuss the Ocean project that's being discussed tonight for funding. Many of the neighbors would have come tonight if they knew that you were going to be actually voting on that tonight, but we want to tell you we support the community, and we want you to support us. We had an opportunity to meet with Michael Senacore. He gave us an opportunity to put a, like a partition at the top of Ocean Avenue coming down Fernleaf. Everybody kind of had a comment, suggestions, and we came together as a community, something that means a lot to all of us. The problem that we have now is if you vote tonight to fund this project, you won't have the opportunity to discuss really the next community involvement, which is they want to increase the sidewalks four feet or six feet on each side narrowing Ocean Avenue. And some of you may have walked this on the 22nd. Joy and Will was so kind to come down and talk to us all. The police have come down. We're all here about a safety issue and a community involvement. We'd like you to put some kind of partition to show how wide the street will be and how the sidewalk will be, so people can feel it and, and join you and join the community to feel good about it. That's about it. Will, thank you. Joy, thank you for coming always to our, our favor and helping us always. And please, please wait and try to do something that we can all be happy about. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise?
Thank you, council. I'm now here to speak on the topic that I intended to speak on, and it has to do with the license and unlicensed.
I'm sorry, you can only speak on one, one time during public comment?
Excuse me?
You can only speak once during public comment on agenda, non-agenda items.
Since that isn't, that isn't stated anywhere in the council agenda, and I've been coming to this council for over 30 years, and I've never been advised of that, and I've spoken on multiple times. So I'd request?
Well, you can speak for three minutes total, and you've spoke your three minutes, I believe.
I don't believe I spoke for three minutes.
There'll be another opportunity to speak later on the agenda.
When, later on in the agenda, is there an opportunity? You know, this is the type of thing that causes people a lot of frustration with the city when they're trying to be engaged and support, and I consider that to be a violation of my rights. Mr. Harp?
Well, it's not, and we're trying to be fair to everyone and give them the same amount of time.
That's fine. I've had two minutes. I'd like one minute then to speak.
Go.
May I have that minute?
Sure. One minute.
Okay. As Ms. Curran pointed out, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals did, in fact, on September 8th of this year uphold Costa Mesa's ordinance regarding unlicensed residential care facilities, also known as sober living homes. Newport Beach, both through extensive community effort and the city itself, did in fact enact ordinances to regulate licensed and unlicensed facilities. There was literally millions of dollars spent by the community and the city to, to develop a defensible legal framework, and the city's ordinances were, including integral facilities, were in fact upheld in the court by Judge Selna, I believe it was 2018. The city's ordinances have never been challenged, and a challenge prevailed. The city does in fact have ordinances to regulate licensed and unlicensed slash sober living residential care facilities, and both to ensure the safety of those people seeking a legitimate, we have experience, and the members of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment?
Good evening, city council, and thank you for listening to us and staying here a little bit longer probably than you expected to tonight. I'm here to discuss the Ocean Boulevard expansion also. I've lived in China Cove for 40 years, and I think you've probably heard comments that are some favorable and quite a few unfavorable. I think what the community is trying to say, we would really, oh, my name's Catherine Callender. What we'd really like to say, I think a lot of us, and we may all come together and support this project a lot more than we are right now, if we saw that it was not a safety issue, what we're continuing to head for. You want to have a stop sign at the top of the hill heading up, which we'd just like to see if we could, if it's possible, have something set up ahead of time where we could see, as Linda mentioned, the expansion of the sidewalk. If we could move the curb in a little bit and live with that for maybe, oh, I don't know, a weekend or three days or so, to make sure that there are not safety issues. We've got a lot of elderly people that live down in our neighborhood. We have a lot of people that exercise going up and down the street, and I really don't, I kind of enjoy it since I live in that corner house there, but we just want to make sure that there are not safety issues with the stop sign put in and the sidewalk and the crosswalk where that would cross if there was a stop sign. Would that put pedestrians at a disadvantage? So is it possible? That's my question. If we could just see something put in place, the narrowing of Ocean Boulevard, how narrow that would be, the stop sign and the crosswalk, and live with it for a few days, and maybe we'd all come together and support this, which would be great.
Great.
So that's just a question I have. If you could consider that?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment? All right, seeing none. Mr. Harp, do you have a closed session announcement?
I do. Before I get to that, in regards to the residential care facilities, the city's going to be having a town hall on October 11th at 6:00 PM in the Friends Room, discuss the residential care facilities and the city's ability to regulate them. There'll also be state representatives at that meeting, so to send you're interested in that issue, that'd probably be good for you to attend. And then as far as closed session goes, the city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss items 4A and B on the agenda, including meeting with legal counsel, discuss the initiation of litigation regarding GSX Air versus the County of Orange, as well as one other matter, and to meet with the city's labor negotiators regarding negotiations with the unions that are set forth on the agenda under item 4A.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Two items. One is on that straw vote regarding the lecture hall. I would be a no on that, just for the record. And then one of those issues we're going back for, I've consulted with you, and there's no conflict of interest, but I could see a situation where I hypothetically may or may not choose may not choose this as be one of the two firms in about 30 to 60 days for a company that I have general counsel for to engage in negotiations with another company. So just to avoid the appearance of any impropriety, although there's no conflict, I'm still going to recuse myself on that first item you mentioned. Is that correct, the first one?
Yes, it'll be item 4A. That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
And 6:30?
Is that what we need? Okay. Thank you. We are adjourned and we'll recess rather, and we'll come back at 6:30.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order for the September 24th regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk?
I'll be doing conducting the roll call verbally. Councilmember Blom, we heard him a little while ago. He's via Zoom. He'll jump on shortly, I'm sure. Councilmember Brenner?
Here.
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
Councilmember Duffield?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Here.
Mayor Protem Muldoon?
Present.
Mayor Avery?
Here. Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Yes, we have two reports this evening. So regarding agenda item number 4A, the case titled GSX Air versus the County of Orange, the city council's direction remained unchanged from July 13th, 2021. The second announcement is regarding the additional matter under agenda item number 4A. A motion was made by Councilmember Dixon and seconded by Councilmember Blom to authorize the city attorney's office to file a mandatory fee arbitration case with the Orange County Bar Association against Cooley LLP, William O'Connor, and Andrew Barr for discouragement of fees. All council members voted in favor of the motion except for Mayor Protem Muldoon, who recused himself.
Thank you. Now is the time for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, and we have with us tonight Reverend Keith Horowitz, Soul Center, Orange County. Will provide the invocation, and Councilmember Duffield will lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Good evening, and thank you for taking this time for our invocation and honoring that which an invocation is, which is a blessing, and honoring all faiths and denominations as we take a moment and just turn within in a place of stillness and remembering that that there is a divine presence back of all life, that which created every galaxy, that illuminates every star, that divine holy presence that we sometimes refer to as the Creator or the One, Jehovah or Allah or Yahweh or Elohim or God or just that loving presence. We take a moment and we honor and open to that in a space of grace, of beauty and gratitude, grateful to know that that intelligence that governs the universe, that that birthed every galaxy, that is right now spinning the earth on its axis at 1,000 miles per hour while simultaneously orbiting all the planets around the sun, that same presence that beats our hearts and breathes our breath, is right now blooming billions of flowers all over the globe.
They really like you.
They do. That same presence that is crashing waves upon the shores of every beach. We take a moment and we remember as it states in all the sacred texts around the world that each and every one of us, born from the light, the mind, the love, the grace, the beauty of the divine, that each one of us inherently has a brilliance and a goodness and the responsibility beyond name, age, race, gender, religion, beyond the titles, labels, or even politics. There is a unifying field of all good that simply blesses, and it indwells within each and every one of us. So we take a moment and we bless this evening. We bless it with peace and clarity, with a understanding that surpasses human intellect but is available to all, that knows that in the divine, there is a win-win for everything and everyone all the time. We take a moment and we open to that, to that which we call providence, to that which the forefathers and mothers of this nation were aware of. And just as it says on our currency, in God we trust, we take a moment and we know that 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 brilliance indwells within each and every one of us. So I bless this session. I bless the council members. We bless the city. We bless all of the constituents. We bless all the proceedings with harmony and peace and goodness, and it is from a place of deep and abiding thanksgiving, knowing that as we simply relax and surrender and yield to the greatest and grandest vision inversion, we can allow it to be. We bless it so, we allow it to be so, and so it is. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance of our great country. Ready to begin. Please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Now is the time for council announcements and oral reports from council members on committee activities. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any announcements or reports? Sure. Councilmember O'Neill?
Sure, I was able to attend the Corona del Mar Residents Association meeting with Councilmember Brenner. Appreciate my colleagues attending the Spyglass Hill picnic, fantastic event put on by the community up in Spyglass Hill. Every year it is, it's just a, it's a great time to get together, and they always do a great program. This year they had a poodle show, which my children, my children thought was amazing. The Oasis Cars and Coffee through the Friends of Oasis was phenomenal, just like I think previous years. My son couldn't believe that there were cars older than his grandparents. And then the Crystal Cove soiree on Saturday night, well attended, and it was announced that the state of California is going to be, through the Parks Department, is going to fund the remaining costs of the restoration for all of the cottages down at Crystal Cove. And it's great that the city of Newport Beach has been a partner throughout that, and it was, is a, is an announcement that was really well received, and so I look forward to seeing twice the number of cottages coming online. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of places where I've been and where I'm going. Aviation Committee met last Monday, just to announce just general, generally, our ad hoc committee members, all citizens, residents of Newport Beach who've been actively working on various airport noise related issues. We've had some very successful meetings of our ad hoc with the carrier, the air carriers that serve John Wayne, and our city manager attends those meetings and members of our ad hoc, and it's conversations about new plane technology and new takeoff paths are really moving forward in trial scenarios. Also, our quiet program, working with our FBOs that are at John Wayne, working to develop a program for quieter airplanes, and then also working with the FAA on some issues that we've had with some small planes flying over some of the residences in the Bayside area. So we're working with the FAA and also the FBOs to work and educate those pilots about where the flight path should go. They're flying too far over the residential homes, and we heard a lot from the residents, so we're reacting and we're dealing with that. Not necessarily chronologically, the Arts Commission had a fabulous reception and luncheon. I attended the reception. I couldn't attend the luncheon with two, opening up the new Sculpture Garden Phase Five and Six and honoring the artists. So that was a lovely event, another lovely event put on by our Arts Commission. And it was a pleasure to attend the Spyglass Hill picnic, as they do every year. They do such a great job, and all the residents come together. Last weekend in Newport Beach was very busy, and I know others will comment on their various activities, but Recreation and Senior Services did a great concert at Marina Park on Sunday night with the Night Riders of Long Beach, they like to be called, and great band, about, I think, 800 to 1,000 people, families, kids were there. Marina Park's such a great venue for families, and so that was great. Then I went from there over here to the Civic Green, and the Santana Ways was great, and I probably think there were about 4,500, maybe 5,000 people out there. And for the fans of going back generations, decades, who were fans of Santana, and still are, they were all rocking out. It was really quite, quite fun, people of all ages. And the Oasis Car Show, which is always a wonderful event. Going forward, I have a town hall, I think I have a slide that will pop up, a District One Town Hall on October 5th, Tuesday, October 5th, at Marina Park in person at from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And I think that is it for all my announcements. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Blom?
I have none. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Duffield?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended our Executive Watershed Committee that's doing great work upstream, keeping our harbor from sediment and vegetation and trash, but that's a very important committee. And also, I'd like to announce that at our last council meeting, we heard from residents who were very concerned about residential care facilities following an August incident on Redlands Drive. Because this type of facility is authorized by the state, we wanted to have a community meeting with residents and state and local representatives. The meeting will be held Monday, October 11th, 6:00 PM in the Friends Room of the Newport Beach Library. And we will have city and state representatives there, and we also have invited our county officials as well. For those impacted, I hope you can join us for this important discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Muldoon?
Thank you. And I also attended the Spyglass Hill picnic, which is a great neighborhood event, really well done, and also attended the Bow Y on Art Walk and got to judge the artwork and present the mayor's award to a very deserving recipient. I had a photo, but it's not ready for primetime yet, so maybe I'll do that at some point. And also attended with several other of my council member compatriots, the new Sculpture Garden, opening of Fifth and Sixth Elements of Sculpture Garden, great stuff and really active arts commission, which is so important to this community. And the car show at Oasis, and the greatest thing about it is it's just early in the morning and it's over quick, and you see some great cars and folks are in a good mood, walking around with their coffee, and there was a '57 pink Thunderbird my wife really liked. So I might have to, I don't know, look around on line somewhere. And then it was really something for me to attend the opening of the of Orange Coast College's Professional Mariner Training Center, which is right there on Coast Highway. Some of you may have noticed the new pedestrian bridge that went up a couple, year and a half ago or more, and it was exceptional, and I had something to do with its creation, and it was really something to see the the end of this project, which went very well, by the way, on time and on budget, and it'll be a great resource for young folks and people who are reentering the workforce, if they have an interest in career in the maritime world, can be anything from marina management to working on a Foss tugboat, to transferring to Cal Maritime and furthering their career to go into the merchant marine. That's what this new center is all about, and it was financed through a bond issued to the Coast Community College District. And there were six agencies involved at least, Coastal Commission, Cal Trans for the bridge, the County of Orange, the city, the state, the Office of the State Architect, so it, and there's several other, several others I'm forgetting, but Coastal Commission, yes. And it reminded me of, you know, in this time when people sometimes disparage government, government can do some incredible things, and this is an example of agencies coming together, of course, never easy, but ultimately the product greatly benefits our community and will certainly make a difference in people's lives going forward who come to college and maybe they're not a regular college student, they have a different path, and this place is available to them to pursue that interest in being on vessels and on the ocean. Thank you very much. Ms. Brenner?
Brad, I got a chance to tour your center down there on on PCH with a friend who's an architect, and and I just have to tell you, that place is amazing. You did a great job, and we got to see the simulator where they can simulate storms if you're out on the ocean, and it was just really, really impressive, so great job on that. I just spent three days in Sacramento at the League of Cities meeting, which, as I mentioned before, is almost all the cities in California are members. They're changing their branding and their name to Cal Cities, so when you see things mentioned for Cal Cities, that's the former League of Cities in California. I also went to the Arts Foundation for the Sculpture Garden, the Spyglass Hills picnic, and the car show, and I wanted to mention on the car show that Jim Warren won Best in Show, I think it was, and he has a hot rod that has won, I believe they said Best in Nation two different times. It was really hot, so it was, it was darling, and that was fun, and everybody was enjoying that. I also had a meeting of the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control Board of Trustees, and we now in Orange County have cases of human infection of West Nile virus from the mosquitoes. It was in Buena Park. They have not been located down here, but they test all the time. And the thing I want to always mention is if you're seeing a lot of mosquitoes around your home, this is an agency that will come out for free and inspect your home and tell you where they're breeding and how you can improve the the area around your home and your patio, so, and it's free. They'll, they'll take care of it, so it's really important if you're seeing a lot of mosquitoes. Let's see, I also went to the Newport Beach Arts Foundation Art Show at Bastango on Sunday, which was really a fun event, and Bastango did an amazing job. And then, let's see, I've got a couple of announcements. Last night I attended a meeting at Enson Junior High on bicycle safety with Officer Mark Hamilton and Officer Zachary Varela, and they did a great job. There were probably 50 parents there and four school board members, and everybody is really concerned about the electric bikes and the scooters and all the other thing, and they had done the same program at Enson for the kids. They're going to do Corona del Mar, they're going to do more of these information nights, and I really think it's important for parents to come to this too, because you learn a lot when you're there about, you know, what they're telling the kids. And one of the interesting things that they talked about was rules versus laws, and that sometimes there are rules that, you know, you get a slap on the wrist if you disobey those, but when you're talking about a law, they are subject to a significant citation. So, and they are taking the approach, our police department is taking the approach of we are making sure that we're educating all these kids and grownups and other people that ride electric bikes, and then we're going to start citing. So they, they are right on top of it, they want to make got a couple of announcements. Last night, I attended a meeting at Enson Junior High on bicycle safety with Officer Mark Hamilton and Officer Zachary Varela, and they did a great job. There were probably 50 parents there and four school board members, and everybody is really concerned about the electric bikes and the scooters and all the other thing. And they had done the same program at Enson for the kids. They're going to do Corona Del Mar, they're going to do more of these information nights. And I really think it's important for parents to come to this, too, because you learn a lot when you're there about, you know, what they're telling the kids. And one of the interesting things that they talked about was rules versus laws, and that sometimes there are rules that, you know, you get a slap on the wrist if you disobey those. But when you're talking about a law, they are subject to a significant citation. And they are taking the approach, our police department is taking the approach of, we are making sure that we're educating all these kids and grownups and other people that ride electric bikes, and then we're going to start citing. So they are right on top of it. They want to make sure that nobody says, "I didn't know I couldn't ride against traffic," or, "I didn't know I had to wear a helmet," or whatever, because they're making sure they're in the education part right now, and then they're going to start citing them. And the tickets will get larger, you know, each time. So it's something that parents will start to notice if the kids are cited certainly more than once. And I spoke with John Lewis yesterday, and I was talking to him about this electric bike issue, and he said that he has spoken to our Assemblywoman, Cotty Petrie-Norris, about the fact that our laws have not kept up with the technology. We don't have the kind of laws for electric bikes that we really need to be effective. So he's talking with her about it. She lives in Laguna. She's got the same problem, and she also is very concerned. But she said when she goes to meet with someone from Inglewood, that she needs to vote with her on this project, they can't believe that we have 14-year-olds on $2,500 bikes. So it's, you know, it's harder for them to relate to the seriousness, but she's working very hard on that. And I think it's going to become imperative for us to all help to educate them, the rest of the Assembly and the Senate, about the dangers. Let's see, one other thing. We have a shred and e-waste event coming up on Saturday, October 16th, 8:00 to noon. And I can't read this. Where is it? At the Harbor Day Parking Lot. So that's a really important thing to attend to. And then I have one other thing to talk about. People have come to me and said, "Oh, there's a new trail in Buck Gully that we hadn't seen before." So what happened was that in 2019, the city discovered that an illegal trail, approximately 10 to 14 feet wide, had been cut in the upper, lower Buck Gully, but the upper part of Buck Gully. And the unauthorized trail started from a residential address on Isabella Terrace in Corona Del Mar connected to the main Buck Gully Trail. After an investigation, it was determined that a resident was responsible for the illegal trail. Criminal charges were eventually filed related to this incident. In September, the resident entered a guilty plea to misdemeanor charges. As part of his sentence, he was placed on probation and ordered to pay just over $74,000 in restitution to the city. He was also ordered to make a contribution to the city in the amount of $35,000 for habitat restoration within the Buck Gully Reserve. I'd like to thank our city attorney's office, the police department, the recreation, community development, and public works, who all did a great job of working with the district attorney to resolve this. The reason that I'm making this announcement is, it's really important for people to know. I would imagine this person didn't even know that they weren't allowed to do that, but it's really important for people to understand that they don't have the right to create a trail in our natural preserves. So anyway, that's it for me.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 15. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending enaction. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related items 1 through 15?
No. Do I need to announce my ex parte now or later? Okay. I met with Pacifica High School, and I did a tour.
We can dispose it. We'll get to the item.
Later, okay. All right. I have none now.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neil?
None.
Councilmember Dixon?
None.
Councilmember Blom? Councilmember Blom? Okay. Councilmember Duffield?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item number five, because I have a really cool old sign for my business.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Muldoon?
I have none. Did you want to give Noah a second?
Yes. And I have none. And Mr. Blom? Okay. All right.
Ready for a motion, Ms. Mayor?
Thank you.
Okay. I move the balance of consent calendar items 1 through 15 with amendments to the minutes, and a recusal by Councilman Duffield on item 4 for a beautiful old sign, and currently absent from Mr. Blom.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Let's vote?
Public comment.
Public comment, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Avery, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I have two consent calendar items I would like to comment on. The first is number 6, which is asking you to authorize the appointment of a redistricting committee. That would involve that committee that you're authorizing holding multiple public meetings, and I would not be surprised if they were to engage a demographic consultant or something of that sort. And I was surprised to see the item says that will have no fiscal impact related to the item. It would seem to me it would be helpful for the public to know a more realistic estimate of how much the redistricting effort will cost. And number 2, depending on what it costs, whether we absolutely have to do it at this time, if there is a ballot initiative pending that might change our number of districts down to six, which would negate the result of this effort, however much it might cost. The second item I wanted to comment on is number 12, which has to do with the contract for Phase 7 of the sculpture exhibition in the city park. I noticed that there is a fairly major discrepancy between the staff report and the contract you're being asked to approve as to how the selection of art will happen in the next phase. The staff report has been altered from the way it was in previous phases, saying that the Arts Commission will first make its selections, and then those will be put out to the public, who will make the final choices pending approval by the city council. The staff report, the contract that you're being asked to approve is still the same contract as it was in the last phase, which says the public will weigh in, and then the Arts Commission will choose the works. So the order is reversed. It's quite a significant difference, and it would be good if the contract and the staff report agreed with each other, so we'd know what the process will be. Who will be making the final choices that are coming to you? Will it be the public directly, or it will be the Arts Commission weighing in on what the public wanted? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on agenda items, on the consent calendar, sorry? Items 1 through 15, seeing none? Any additional council comments?
Just quickly, Councilmember Blom does not have anything to pull for consent calendar.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, council. I came to you a little while earlier and realized that you're going to be voting tonight, so I called 22 people in our community. Two of them are here, four more are coming. It'll be about item number 11. Michael Sinicori is going to be, I guess, presenting, or you're all voting on it. But one of the concerns, and Catherine Calendar, when she was here, is a large member in our community on Ocean Street. She really wants to have you support the community, and she wants our community to support you. All she's asking is that you delay tonight's vote and give us the opportunity to see how this safety issue will happen with a four-foot-wide sidewalk or a three-foot-wide sidewalk, by putting pylons and putting the cars in an area so we can see how narrow. It may be the community is wrapping their arms around it and asking for everything to happen like you want. All we want is for you to delay tonight so that the community can be a group with the council. Thank you.
Mr. Harp?
And just briefly, regarding the comments made by Mr. Mosher in regards to agenda item number 12, there was a slight change, so we'll make sure the contract matches the staff report. The staff report has the correct process.
Great, thank you. Ms. Brenner?
Could we ask Arlene to clarify that for our information, because I know I've talked to her about what the process is going to be this time, but I think people should know what it's going to be exactly.
I'm Arlene Greer, Chair of the City Arts Commission. Yes, we have changed it up a little bit to give the public more input in the process of making selections for the Sculpture Garden. So we'll be, and those who have honorariums that are too expensive for the city, they will also not be offered in a public survey, nor offered, you know, to the City Arts Commission. It is, we'll be giving the public the opportunity to weigh in on all the selections rather than just choosing one that they like the best. Have I stated that correctly, Mr. Hetherton?
Thank you.
Do you understand that?
Thank you, Arlene. I've been pushing for that for a very long time, so I'm very appreciative of the fact that we're letting the public weigh in on all of them.
Yes, and it's a growing pain. As we evolve and we go from one phase to another, we've made some changes, and we just continue to ask for more public input, because they are the people that elect you and are helping to pay for this as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any?
Something quickly, point of order. I'm going to amend my motion to pull item 11. Wait for the members of the community to speak on it. If the second would please...
I'll second.
Thank you.
All right.
One more quick correction. You mentioned that Councilmember Duffield had a conflict on item 4. It was item number 5, just for the record.
Ms. Dixon?
I will wait.
Okay. Great. Do we have any other public comments on the consent calendar?
My name is Harley Broviak. I live in China Cove, and I'm here to also address a subject that Linda Zalany just brought up.
Right, but this is for the consent calendar.
Pardon me?
You just pulled the item. Okay. Go ahead. Sorry.
May I continue?
Yeah.
No, no, I pulled the item.
So it's going to come?
So it's going to come back. So please hold. Okay.
When you say you pulled it, does that mean it's delayed to another meeting, or does that mean that you've delayed it for the evening until later?
Only the mayor controls the timing of the agenda, but I pulled it, so it'll be after the consent calendar, so it'll be brief.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You'll have a chance to comment on it then.
Yeah. All right. Seeing no other folks that want to comment on the consent calendar? I don't know. So we have a motion and a second?
Prior to doing roll call vote, I will read the titles for the ordinances of items 3 through 5, ordinance number 2021-16, and ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending Title I Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan of the Newport Beach Municipal Code and adopting Local Coastal Program Amendment LC 2019-6 related to residential design standards, ordinance number 2021-17, and ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending Title 21 of Newport Beach Municipal Code and adopting Local Coastal Program Amendment LC 2017-4 related to certain front yard and side yard setbacks on Lido Isle, ordinance number 2021-18, and ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending Title 21 of the City of Newport Beach Municipal Code related to the amortization of non-conforming signs. So for roll call vote, Councilmember Blom? I'll get back to him. Councilmember Brenner?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Duffield?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Blom, are you back? Mayor Protem Muldoon?
Aye.
Mayor Avery?
Yes.
Let me see if he's still on. Yeah, he's... Councilmember Blom? His connection is not very good where he is at. Let me see if I can get him to text me his vote. Thumbs up or thumbs down? He gave me a yes. So that is unanimous, 7-0.
Thank you very much. Now we'll have public comments on agenda items. Right. Do we have the people here to do that?
No, they're still here.
Do we have, I was going to move it back.
I don't have much people coming, so I just...
Right. So we'll move item 11 back to the back of the agenda after item 18? Does that make sense? Because we don't have people here yet. They're coming, is that right?
Are still people coming, so should I wait until everyone?
Yes, we'd like to have the whole group there, so it'll be toward the end of the meeting, unless they're here now.
They're all...
So how soon are the others coming?
How soon, my friend?
Okay, well, I think you either speak now, and whoever's here carries the group, or you wait until the rest of the group show up. We'll move it to the back of the meeting.
I'll start if I may.
Yes, of course.
And just for clarification, we're opening up agenda item number 11 at this point to public comment.
Thank you. My name's Harley Broviak. I own 2709 and 2715 Cove Street, lived in China Cove for 25 years. And you'll have to forgive me, because I don't have my reading glasses with me, so it's going to be a little bit difficult for me to read this. But anyway, there is some discrepancy regarding the stop sign versus the yield sign at the top of the ramp in China Cove. There's also discrepancy regarding the width of the sidewalks. There's mention of increasing the width of the sidewalks from three feet to four feet. We're requesting a delay until we can address these matters and see an accurate and updated diagram. We would like to request a better physical mock-up of the improvement. We would like to also request a formal traffic impact study relating to the narrowed street on Ocean Boulevard, the widened sidewalks, and the signage. The greatest concern is the gridlock which will be caused between pedestrians and vehicles. I'm sure everybody in this room wants to protect all persons involved and make sure that there is no situation that would cause people to become injured or maimed, or possibly, and I hate to say it, killed. And then the other concern is how the gridlock in the summertime can bottleneck the neighborhood and prevent an evacuation during an emergency like a fire, or a flood, or an earthquake, or another public crisis. We're asking to please delay your vote on doing any of this until we can see a more formalized study and see updated diagrams. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Other speakers have health issues and won't be able to talk.
Okay, thank you.
But they do have an interest, and the May 18th meeting needed another meeting. And that's what we're asking for. The decision to have this happen now is causing a lot of stress for a lot of people.
Right. So I see someone, sir, are you going to speak to this?
Well, just real briefly. I'm a resident also down in China Cove.
Sure.
And just to see more, more formal design effort, rather than...
If you can speak to the mic, please. Thank you.
All I see now are some pylons and some spray paint on the asphalt. So, yeah, just a more well-defined plan and design. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on item 11? All right, I'll take it back up here.
Could we get Dave or Mike Sinicori to give us a report?
Sure.
Sure, let me take a stab at it. Mike, you can join us. This is a project we've been budgeting and working on for some time, and I didn't bring the list of community meetings, but we spent many years with the community working on this. This has to do with completing the sidewalk on the south side of Ocean Boulevard, where it stops at Fernleaf and over to Dahlia. Along right with the Fernleaf ramp, there's an area there that is unpaved right now. We have folks in wheelchairs and other folks that like to go there and look at the sunset. I have a couple slides just to kind of orientate you. This first slide here, if you look, I'm sorry if the slides come up, top left-hand corner, this is the stretch of street that the folks have been talking about, that we are going to narrow and put a sidewalk on. The bottom right-hand picture is the edge of that. You can see where the black suburban is, or Tahoe. That is the curb right now. The plan on this is to move the curb over four feet, and then what that'll do, it's a currently 40-foot street And then what that'll do, it's a currently 40-foot street from curb to curb in Ocean Boulevard. Your residential standard for new streets is 36 from curb to curb. We are going to put the curb at a 36-foot. So you'll have two eight-foot travel, two eight-foot parking lanes and two 12-foot, I'm sorry, two 10-foot travel lanes, which is your standard. Just for reference, by the way, the streets in Corona del Mar typically like Dahlia, are 30-foot curb to curb. And they function at, obviously, okay. But this would meet your residential standard when we're done. It'll add a five-foot sidewalk against that edge. You'll see in the picture here, staff's been watching this years. You've got folks, that's how they traverse now. They walk in the street along the cars. We're going to put those people basically on a sidewalk so they continue there. This down at the very bottom corner is what you'll see usually at night in other places. This is right across where the Fernleaf ramp is. We would be adding a handicap ramp here where you can get up on the sidewalk. This is dirt where that gentleman in the wheelchair is. We'd be completing the sidewalk over here so you could continue walking along here. That's kind of what the project looks like on a plan view here. You'll look at Ocean Boulevard. This is the area I'm talking about right here, which will go from 40 feet to 36 feet to meet our residential standard. This will be the five-foot sidewalk that's added in by moving the curb four feet over. Joining the sidewalk here, you will now, instead of going off the sidewalk and around, you'll follow the sidewalk around. You'll be able to use the stairs. Come down to the corner here. Through the many community meetings, the residents have asked that this little nose be pushed out a little because there's a visibility issue here. Mike Senicori worked diligently with them. We've had, you'll go out there, you'll see paintings on the streets. There's been a lot of talk about how big. But this nose goes out a little, and then there will be folks crossing here to this little landing on the south side. That's basically the project, to add that sidewalk into the street. I understood there's a concern tonight about stop sign versus the yield. I actually have in the notes that Mike's worked in the meetings. At one time it was a stop sign, then there's an overwhelming call to make it a yield. I think we can work those bugs out with the community in the future. I mean, that's not set in stone whether it's a yield or a stop sign. We had a call to have crosswalks, and there was an overwhelming majority of people at the community meeting saying we don't want crosswalks at this location. So there has been a lot of public input here. And I can only leave you with, the street will meet your current local residential standards for traffic. It is not a busy street. It's basically the dead end of Ocean Boulevard. And our traffic folks don't see a concern here. Oh, but on that note, someone mentioned we did a test. There was a test done out here. People parked their cars. We spray painted some lines on the street to try to get the feel of it. So there was some working with the community on that level, too. So I'd have to ask Mike Senicori to talk to those elements because he actually participated in that. And that's the project.
Thank you.
You know, yeah, we did do a test. Actually, I stumbled across it, and Linda and I think a couple other neighbors had moved their cars out and gave an opportunity to look at it, take some pictures. We literally spray painted the new center line of the street down the middle just to see how trucks would travel through it. And I have no doubt it's going to work fine. The real concern we have at staff level is that sidewalk. And there's been lots of requests to continue that oceanfront sidewalk, as you will, looking out over the water. There was, I mean, why don't we use the one on the inside? Well, folks want to look at the water, and they're, they end up walking in the street right here. I'll also point to the bottom left, that landing area we're talking about. There's a veteran that's out there every day. And that's an evening ritual with those people blocking the sidewalk there. So having a little landing in a place for, his name's Matt, to sit next to a bench is something we think is an important feature. By the way, the final plans are behind you for review, and I'd be happy to have another meeting with the community and go over every last detail. And until it's built, we can tweak it a little bit here and there. But the real importance is the little tiny nose. Again, that went back and forth and back and forth. We went as, just as minimally as we could as extending that nose. So we have a handicap ramp crossing the street, joining Dahlia across the street, and also being able to, as Dave's showing, being able to hook that over to the ramp that we're having over on the south side of the street. Again, I have no problem meeting again with the residents. I would recommend a ward tonight so we can get it lined up to build it in the spring. If we need to do a major tweak, we'd bring it back to you for a tweak. But we'd like to get the contract going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Any further public comment on this item? Any comment from council?
I can't. My screen is frozen, so I'd like to make a comment. This project has been discussed for probably three years now. Before I was on council, I know it was, a big project was being discussed, where we were going to redo all the concrete and totally revamp that whole area. And the community came unglued about that and did not want additional parking and did not want a green belt area there, a greenscape there. And so when I first got on council, I asked Dave if he could just hold off a year on that, put his money somewhere else that people were clamoring to have something done, and let us go out and meet with the public. And I know Will and I have met with the public. We've talked about this at CDMRA meetings. There was a walk the other day from one end of Ocean Boulevard to the other with the Parks Commission that, you know, it's kind of like you're never going to please everyone with this. And so we, I like the fact that we can still tweak some things. And that the yield, you know, John Hamilton was the one that asked for that stop sign there. And when we were out there before, he became ill. And he was saying that when he comes up the ramp, that his car is on a tilt and that he can't see the pedestrians that walk along there before, you know, before his car gets up high enough. So that's why we started talking about the stop sign there. But we're not locked in stone about a stop sign there. And maybe we can do a test and see if we like it with a stop sign or see if we like it with the yield sign. So I think there's still some things that we can work together on. But I just, I feel like we can't delay this any longer. We've got staff time being, a lot of staff time has been spent on this and will be spent on this. And they have other projects to do that they're fitting into their queue. And it, I think we could talk about it forever if we wanted to. So, anyway, I'd like to see us proceed, but definitely have Mike continue to meet with the residents. And if things need to be tweaked, if we find something that doesn't work well, then we, you know, we find a different way to do it. But it's almost like now we need to see how it works. So anyway, that would be my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I appreciate you pushing this item back. Just wanted everyone to have a chance to speak. Traditionally, we wouldn't do a formal traffic survey or study for a project like this. I'm also inclined to say we should move forward, but I agree with Councilmember Brenner that the yield sign or stop sign is something that passersby look at down the road. And it's not as important, it sounds like, to the project. I do think that the sidewalk width and the street width is set already as a precedent in the city. Unfortunately, I understand your concerns, but we've, this is a way to accommodate ADA access to the sidewalk while still having our streets wide enough for drivers. So, that was my thought. So I'm happy to move the item. I just wanted them to have a chance to be heard.
Thanks. Okay. Do we have a second?
Now it's time for the vote. Councilmember Blom?
Yes.
And also, Councilmember Blom regarding consent calendar. If you can confirm your vote, please.
For consent calendar, I am also a yes. Thank you for that confirmation.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner for item 11?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Duffy? Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Muldoon? And Mayor Avery?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. We're now moving to item 17. Ordinance number 2021-21, zoning code amendment and general plan amendment to change the land use designation and zoning district for multiple unit residential to private institutions at 1499 Monrovia Avenue.
Actually, I'm sorry to interrupt. There's actually one more opportunity for the public to comment on non-agenda items before we get to item 16.
So any further comment from the public on non-agenda items?
Good evening, Newport Beach City Council. My name is Stephen Fusswinkle, and I live in the Santa Heights neighborhood and was here two weeks ago for the September 14 meeting with many in my neighborhood. I understand somebody else was here earlier today as well to talk about some of the challenges that the neighborhood's been facing for many years. Before I get there, I'd just like to start out by explaining a little bit about who I am and where I'm coming from. I was born and raised in New York and remember very distinctly when the World Trade Center was attacked. And I felt a calling that day and at that time to support my community and support my nation. And so I did. I attended the United States Naval Academy, was commissioned as a nuclear surface warfare officer and spent six years on active duty and continue to serve within the reserves and have been for about seven years. That day changed a lot within this country, and I felt I had the responsibility to be a part of the solution. And I continue to be a part of that today and have the privilege of living here in the great city of Newport Beach while having the privilege to live in this city and work in the civilian side at one of the biggest manufacturing companies in Orange County. Now, I want you to know that about a month ago, an event happened within my neighborhood that also needs to be addressed, and that's why I'm here. That's what's calling me to action again. It's something that I think we need to figure out together and how to best address the situation. Within our small community, we have five group homes that we have within three blocks of one another with two bears being owned by the same owner. And my understanding, that type of activity is illegal, having those integral facilities like that. We live in a neighborhood with very little vehicle traffic because the only people who come into our neighborhood are those that are destined for a home there, right? And so for the last year and a half that I've lived there, I've noticed that we get significantly more traffic to these group homes than any other, than any other in the neighborhood because of the quantity of individuals that live within those homes, especially during the evening hours when I'm out riding my bicycle with my daughter, my five-year-old daughter, through the neighborhood. In some cases, as confirmed by a prior house manager, some of these homes have between 12 to 15 people. And according to that same house manager, she felt unsafe for those in the neighborhood with children who were in these, because of who were in these group homes were, and the controls that they were subject to, or in some cases, the lack of controls they were subject to, given that they were, in most cases, or in some cases, state-assigned parolees that were residing there. We felt this unsafe situation very strongly about a month ago when someone lost their life who came from one of those houses. But we've also felt it with theft that's occurred in the neighborhood. Everything from bicycles being stolen out of side yards to breaking and entering during evening hours and rummaging through and stealing personal items off the kitchen counter. Consistent cleanliness and littering near and around some of these facilities, loud and boisterous events, some of which are waking up our children in the middle of the night. A man running naked through the streets in broad daylight. Thank goodness the Newport Beach Police Department, who is in the back here, were around to be able to respond and address that man. When we mentioned this two weeks ago, we discussed trying to apply the recently passed Costa Mesa regulations here in Newport Beach where it enforced them. And we were told by Newport Beach policy was essentially the same. But after looking into this, we found one difference was that in Costa Mesa, these state-licensed facilities have an application process they need to follow. And then furthermore, when this policy was put into place, if you give me another minute, sir?
Yep.
Thank you. When these policies were put into place, these homes were given one year to become compliant. Now, maybe that's a difference and maybe it's not. Maybe the Costa Mesa ordinance is being enforced more rigorously, but it's just a concern that's coming from our neighborhood. And I'm hopeful that we can make this an agenda item so that it can be truly discussed, and we can work through this together as a city to address this. I understand that in some of your words, city attorney, your hands have been tied or the hands of council have been tied, and that we should reach out to the state. But why can't we reach out to the state together as a city of Newport Beach and as our strong community need to try to work together with the state of California and the Department of Healthcare Services, who's supposed to be regulating some of these facilities and enact some change in the way we're regulating, or in our case, maybe not regulating as much as we should be or at all? I think it's important to state that while I'm only referring to one community in these historical events, I think it is just one neighborhood that I'm describing, but I know it's similar across all of Newport Beach. And it's extremely important to me, my neighbors. It's impacting our quality of life, of us and our families and our children. And we're going to continue to organize this community. And given the number of homes across Newport Beach, I know there's two more in Corona del Mar, one coming soon on Vista Bay. I'm certain that will be organized across Newport Beach. And of equal importance, I think, are the people in some of these facilities who clearly are not getting the quality of care that they deserve and need at a time like this within their lives. You know, life was lost because of the lack of care that this person had. And I think the care they require is in a controlled environment with proper security and medical support, which it doesn't seem that they're receiving. And please let me know what we need to do to take action, whether that be a study session, an agenda item, an upcoming board meeting in any way. I know the recent news about the October 11 meeting is certainly a good step. And I'm anxiously awaiting Councilman Duffy for what the agenda is going to look like at that particular event and what we can do to best prepare for that event, to make it as productive as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have any other speakers? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to item 17. Ordinance 2021, zoning code amendment and general plan amendment to change the land use designation and zoning district for multiple unit residential to private institutions at 1499 Monrovia Avenue.
We actually need to take item 16 first.
Skip to page.
This is the Newport Center. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and City Councilmembers.
And just for clarification for the audience, we're going to take item number 16 first, which is the ordinance 2021-19 and 2021-20. And that's related to the residents at Newport Center, 150 Newport Center Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Simo and Jurges, Community Development Director. This is a general plan amendment for the property at 150 Newport Center Drive. And with me is Liz Westmoreland, who's the Associate Planner. Just want to make it clear that this, we have two items. You have item 16 and the next item, item 17. They're a little interrelated. Item 17 is losing housing units, and this item here before you, item 16, is going to gain potential housing units. And it's necessary due to SB 330 if you were to approve this item before you. The applicant is here. We're going to go ahead and have Liz go ahead and make a brief presentation. She has a small, short PowerPoint. And then, Mayor, you can open up a public hearing and the applicant make a presentation, too. Thank you. Liz?
Good evening, Mayor Avery, City Councilmembers. I'm Liz Westmoreland with the Planning Division. The application tonight is for the residences at Newport Center project, located at 150 Newport Center Drive. The proposed project includes the construction of 28 condominium units, which would be in the form of flats. The project also includes two levels of subterranean parking with one level completely below grade and one level partially below grade. The building would reach approximately 53 feet high and include four stories above grade. It includes common and private open space areas in the form of decks, balconies, and a pool area. And generally, the units would range from approximately 1,400 square feet to 5,600 square feet for the uppermost units located on the penthouse level. The project is located on the corner of Newport Center Drive and Anacapa Drive within Gateway Plaza. It's located across the street from three restaurants, including Muldoon's Irish Pub, Fig and Olive, and Reddow. Under current conditions, the project contains the Newport Beach Car Wash. The project site has included a car wash for at least 50 years. It also has an area for gasoline sales and a convenience store on site, all of which would be removed as part of the project. The project requires the approval of several entitlements, and I've listed the key ones on this slide. First and foremost, the project requires the approval of a general plan amendment, which would allow the general plan designation to change from a commercial use to a residential use. Similarly, the zoning code amendment includes a change from office regional to PC or planned community. And with that planned community designation comes the need for a planned community development plan. And this is essentially the zoning text or zoning document that would be adopted for the project and would provide zoning standards such as height, setbacks, floor area, density. Because this project includes fewer than 10 acres in size, a waiver of the minimum acreage requirements would be required in order to implement the project. Now I'll guide you briefly through the site plan. And please know that the applicant has prepared a presentation and will go into the design in more detail. has prepared a presentation and will go into the design in more detail. To orient you, we have or Anacapa Drive at the upper part of the screen and Newport Center Drive over on the left. The first floor will include the lobby and common area amenities as well as eight dwelling units. The guest or valet entrance is located along Anacapa Drive with the driveway. Individuals will be able to continue down to the lower level of parking. However, the main primary entrance for the residents will be in the lower right-hand Again, there's multiple ways to access the site, however, the key area to access the site for residences will be in this bottom right corner. It's accessible via an egress access easement located on Irvine Company property within Gateway Plaza. So I'm going to zoom in on that area to explain it a little bit more. So on this first level of parking, again, we have multiple ways to access the site, and then the owners or residents would access the gate here and then could turn around if needed or exit the site through Gateway Plaza. Additionally, the design includes an area for larger trucks. For example, when the twenty-eight units are going to move in, that will use this area that has been adequately designed for a thirty-foot-long moving truck. Additionally, there is a convenient area located near the receiving area for a freight elevator that would allow for larger items to be transferred to the upper levels. There are many areas to collect the trash, however, the main area to aggregate it would be located in this bottom right-hand corner where the scout truck could pick it up. This rendering from Anacapa Drive gives you an idea of what the project would look like from the streetscape. As you can see, it's been split into two main structures, which helps relieve the bulk and scale of the building. Again, it would reach a height of approximately fifty-three feet. To describe how we measure that height a little bit further, I've provided this exhibit. The red line shows where we've established the grade, and we've determined the grade based on methodology in the surrounding planned community of North Newport Center. And essentially, what we've done is we've taken an average height along Newport Center and we've measured the height from that point, whereas the neighboring North Newport Plan Community just takes the highest point from the street. We've taken a little bit more conservative approach here. It would reach a height of fifty-three feet to the flat element on the roof, and then it could go up to sixty feet for the rooftop appearances such as the elevator overrun or mechanical equipment. However, the applicant has included in their design areas within the parking garage for mechanical equipment in an effort to avoid excess bulk on the roof. Because this project includes a general plan amendment, it's important that we conduct an analysis pursuant to Charter Section four twenty-three, also known as Green Light. So for this project, we're not only looking at the proposed project, but we are also looking at the cumulative development within the statistical area. So we're looking at eighty percent of prior amendments combined along with the project. And so when we examine the four different thresholds, which would allow us to understand whether a vote of the electorate is required, and that's the purpose of the fourth threshold, we see that the project does not exceed the commercial floor area threshold, the increase in allowed dwelling units, AM peak hour trips, or PM peak hour trips. Again, this analysis has been conducted in order to understand if a vote is required, and in this case, it would not be. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, along with the help of an environmental consultant, staff has prepared an environmental impact report. The draft was circulated for a forty-five-day review period in the spring and summer of this year, and we received six comments on the draft DIR. After we provided responses, we did not receive any follow-up concerns or comments from neighboring property owners or agencies. Due to the entitlements that have been requested, we have been consulting with two tribal governments pursuant to AB fifty-two and SB eighteen, and as a result of the consultation, we have included provisions for monitoring within the EIR, so the Native American tribal monitors are available on site during construction. The final EIR has been posted online, and ultimately, the mitigation measures that were included were for construction only, so there's no long-term or operational mitigation measures The final EIR concluded that there would be no significant and unavoidable impacts, and what that means is that the mitigation was sufficient to reduce all impacts identified to less than significant levels. The applicant has requested a voluntary development agreement. It would come with a ten-year term and a public benefit fee of two-point-five million dollars. One-point-eight-seven-five would be dedicated to general public use. Three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand would go to affordable housing. A hundred-and-fifty thousand would go towards serving our neighbors experiencing homelessness, and a hundred-and-fifty thousand would go to public safety. The planning commission has reviewed this project twice. They were able to view it at a study session in May of this year, followed by the formal public hearing in August, where they have recommended approval to the City Council. There are a few key conditions that I'd like to go over for this project. For example, a construction management plan is required for this project and will be reviewed prior to permit issuance so that we can evaluate hall routes, staging, those types of things during construction. Additionally, we are requiring the off-site owner, the Irvine Company, to approve any features that are within their property, for example, redesigning the median or catch basin. Additionally, this project is located within a mixed-use area with the diverse uses such as restaurants, office, Fashion Island, of course. And so with that, we've included a condition of approval that puts future owners as well as tenants on notice that they may be subject to certain nuisances, for example, surrounding restaurants that have late-night hours, live entertainment, outdoor patios, things that come with living in a mixed-use environment. Lastly, the city would be able to review the draft CCNRs for the site. And with that, staff is recommending that the City Council hold a public hearing, certify the final environmental impact report and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approve the resolutions, and pass the ordinances on to a second reading. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions. I believe the applicant team also has prepared a presentation, and we have the environmental consultant here as well if there are any questions.
Okay, Council, we have questions, or do you want to hear from the applicant? All right, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Avery and members of the Newport Beach City Council. My name is Corley Newman, and I'm a principal with Government Solutions, which is located here in beautiful Newport Beach at nine oh one Dove Street. One item of clarification, do you want us to bring the materials board down here on a tripod or just have the architects hand it? Would you like it right here, Simone? I was, okay. They'll do that while I briefly introduce everybody. Going to be a little bit, first of all, thank you so much, staff, and especially Liz. Excellent job. Going to be a little bit repetitive of some of the points that Liz has so articulately stated. Really do want to thank staff for their efforts. It's been a long process, but it's been, I think, the results of the work show this evening. It's a beautiful project that fits in Newport Center, and we have no opposition to this To begin, I just would like to introduce our team, our senior associate from Government Solutions, Katie Marie Newman, the applicant and property owner, Newport Center Anacapa Associates, represented by Scott Ridgeway and Todd Ridgeway. Probably Todd should go first. Our architect from Sterns Architect, Glenn Butler, our landscape architect from MJS Landscape Architecture, Mark Schattenger, and for your reference, our engineer with Fusco Engineering, one of the top-notch engineering firms in Orange County, and they did do all the views, Sims, that you will see this evening. Our entitlement request, as Liz has noted, is extensive, and I think it's important for the, for the community and for the council to recognize that we did go through all the appropriate steps to bring this project forward to you, including a full EIR and the voluntary development agreement. In terms of community outreach, I'm very proud of our work on this project. We did, when we started, we had to use Zoom, and we did have a Zoom meeting with SPON, Harborview Hills Community Association, and Irvine Terrace Community Association. From those associations, there was no opposition to this project. Additionally, we met with our, in July, we began a meeting with both our business neighbors, including the owner of Muldoon's and the Irvine Company. I'm happy to say that we do, as it relates to the Irvine Company, we do have a signed agreement that has been recorded. Additionally, there are some conditions in your, in your tentative map conditions that talk about the, they were very concerned about the size of moving trucks because of the interface with their business community. So we agreed that there would be a minimum of thirty feet, and that is in your documents. As it relates to Muldoon's, there's an Exhibit B in your Exhibit B, Condition Number Three on page sixteen dash one twenty-nine. It addresses their concerns with the residential community being notified of the surrounding uses of theirs and Fig and Olive across the street. As Liz has pointed out, we're in a wonderful location. We're at the corner of Anacapa Drive and Newport Center Drive. We are located in Gateway Plaza. As you know, this is the, primarily, the driveways and the center of the, of the block is owned by the Irvine Company. However, the four corners, which a lot of people don't realize, are owned by others. The Pearl Mutter family owns the building at one eighty, which is at the corner of Anacapa Drive and Civic Center Drive. Then you go around and we have the one ninety building, and then up at the top is John, was John Hamilton's building at one hundred Newport Center Drive, and as many of you have, I think Joy's probably been there, she mentioned her Councilman Brenner, that he had a wonderful sports museum in that building, which was used for a lot of civic activities, and that building is now for sale to others. And again, our, our project does sit directly across the street to Red, from Redo and Fig and Olive Restaurants, and then in block two hundred, Newport Center Drive, is Muldoon's Irish Pub and Spa Gregory's. Project facts, Liz went through pretty thoroughly, but again, it's a four-story building, over two sub, two-level subterranean garage, twenty-eight luxury condominiums, two levels of underground parking, as I mentioned. I think one thing the Meridian learned in their experience in this type of residential high-end product, they got a lot of feedback that the owners there wanted an enclosed garage versus having an open area for their parking. So each resident here will have a two-car enclosed garage in the garage, a garage within a garage, and each one of those will have storage space and a charging station. I believe two charging stations for each person. The height is fifty-three feet in height, and as Liz has mentioned, the surrounding areas, which is Irvine Company's, which is PC fifty-six, is fifty feet in height, so we're in keeping with our surroundings in height. The style of the building is California coastal contemporary, and again, the total site open space has fifty-three, excuse me, fifteen, approximately fifteen thousand square feet plus or minus of open space. The one thing I did forget to mention on the community outreach before I handed over to our architect is that one of the reasons that we did have positive responses from Harborview Homes and Irvine Terrace was because they acknowledged that this project had been, had been changed. Originally, the building was much higher, and it had a lot more units, and they really appreciated the reduction in height because it reduced any view impacts that they may have had. With that, I will turn it over to our architect, Glenn Butler. Thank you.
Cora?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. I'm Glenn Butler, project architect with Sterns Architecture. This is an illustration of the proposed project from along Anacapa Drive. This is the project's front door. Here you can see the four levels above grade and the basic concept of two separate residential wings connected with a ground-floor lobby. We would call the style of the building California coastal contemporary. The building celebrates the California lifestyle with an emphasis on indoor-outdoor living. All the units have generous balconies and large windows. The exterior of the building is clad in stone to create a durable, sophisticated exterior. Specifically, we have selected a light-colored natural limestone for the main body of the building with a darker accent stone. We're trying to create a dynamic building with a horizontal emphasis. This is a view from the corner of Newport Center Drive as though you were walking away from Fashion Island. Again, you see the light-colored stone, lots of glass, generous balconies, and the horizontal Briefly, this is our palette of materials. As previously mentioned, the majority of the building is a light-colored natural limestone with a darker accent limestone. The horizontal banding of the stone would be at a smaller residential scale, not large slabs that would feel more institutional or corporate. Zinc and mahogany are also used. Both are known for their durability in coastal areas and their beauty. The blue-green glass is also evocative of both the sky and the nearby ocean. Here's our site section. Here you can clearly see the two wings with the ground floor connecting lobby and two levels of parking below. And as Cora mentioned, within the parking are twenty-eight private garages plus an additional twenty-six guest parking spaces on site, only fourteen of which were actually required by the city. This is our site plan and first floor plan. Note the lush landscaping at the perimeter to fit in with the rest of Newport Center. The two separate residential wings here are shown in the light yellow, and the connecting lobby with amenities is in the orange. Amenities would include the fitness area, pool and spa, pool seating lounge area, meeting room with kitchen, and the concierge. Visitors arriving by car, they can use the valet at the generous drop-off, or they can follow the red arrow there, as Liz mentioned, and they can self-park and drive to the parking level below. The blue area, the blue arrow, excuse me, is depicting the route for residents only to go straight into the parking structure by driving along the shared drive. Here you can see the continuation of the visitors' ramp. They come down, which ends at the upper red stop bar there with the adjacent call box. Here, one can enter an access code or call who they're visiting. If no answer, they can leave the structure without having to back up their vehicle. Page left, you can see the secure garages within the overall parking structure, each with electrical charging station. It's also worth noting that the vast majority of the mechanical equipment is in this basement level, so it does not clutter up the roof. This is the second level, the first level over the podium. Here you can note, each of the two wings has four residential units, flats, along with two elevators plus an additional service elevator. Third floor is similar. Fourth level is again similar, but we have larger penthouse units with larger terraces. We've endeavored to create a handsome contemporary building with natural stone and quality materials that fits into the neighborhood. And now I'll pass it to Mark Schattenger, the landscape architect. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and fellow council members. My name is Mark Schattenger with MJS Landscape Architecture, located right here in Newport Beach. Oh. Sorry about that. So what I'm going to describe today are the common area amenities and the landscaping for you. So as you can see, there's a generous necklace of green around the entire building. On Newport Center Drive, our setback is fifteen feet, and at the closest area, area at the intersection, we're at fifteen feet, but it goes as good, as much as thirty feet towards going planned south. And on Anacapa, we're at twenty-six feet from the setback, which is very generous today's standards, and we're at fifteen feet on the pool side next to the parking lot for the Irvine Company's property. And as you can see, the drop-off is on Anacapa Drive. This is the drop-off here. It's zero curb, so it's seamless between where you exit the car and go into the lobby area. The lobby's up about two feet. We have the pool area in the, in the rear of the lounge area, and this pool area- And this pool area is about 60 by 60, 3,600 square feet. And the pool is actually a 50-foot-long lap pool, which is very big for a project of this size. See here, we have a raised spa area. We plan on using the limestone as well on the flooring. And we've introduced a little wood around the spa area just to warm up the the space. Not everyone wants to be at the pool area, so we've also have a nice shaded lounge area for the residents to entertain their guests as well. And we have a green wall in the back, so you don't see, you have no views of the parking lot that are at the rear of the site. There is always a demand for a pet relief area for the residents, so we've been able to carve out a space here in the corner of the project. So this area is about 15 by 15, and it's just really just to let your pet out when you don't want to get on your jogging shoes and take him around Newport Center Drive. And I'll turn it over to Cora for the view simulations.
Thank you, Mark. This will conclude our presentation. I will. I just do want to show you the view sims because, as you know, this has become an important discussion item in Newport Beach. And we spent a lot of time making sure that the residents could understand what they were seeing or what what they wouldn't be seeing with this project. Again, our building is 53 feet in height, and it's located at Newport Center Drive in Anacapa. You can see the city Civic Center Park along MacArthur. Got a little bit of a further out distance, and this just shows what some of the buildings surrounding us are. Interestingly enough, there is a building at the end of Block 200 that is actually 79 feet in height. That in part blocks the views to our building, which is only 53 feet in height. This is Harborview Hills Community Association. You know that this association has been very vocal about their view plane. We do not, we do not, we are not located in that. You know, that is in Corporate Plaza, basically, is what that view plane where that is located. We're one block away from that. But this is an existing view from Harborview Hills, Crown Drive, and Ebtide Road. And this is the proposed. And again, our building is tucked in behind existing buildings and landscaping and cannot be seen from this location. This, many of you may have taken this walk, there's a walkway that comes out of this community down to MacArthur. This is Sea Lane and Crown Drive. This is the before. I think we might be having a battery issue. There we go. And this is the after. Again, our buildings are tucked in into Newport Center, not blocking any views from this community. This is moving over a little to Harborview Broadmoor Community, Windover Drive, and Surfline Way. This is taken from a backyard. And this is the after. One more from this community, Salt Air Drive and Blue Water Drive. In this case, you can see in the after our engineer just redlined or yellow-lined the building just so you can get a general idea where it fits into the viewscape. Now we've moved up to our Civic Center Bridge that we're all so proud of, and it's so popular and used. So this is the location looking out across. And here's where our building would be, again, not blocking any views, and it's tucked in in the existing landscaping. This is a very popular location, as you all know. This is Newport Center going down the escalator at the Macy's Terrace. Many of you know that this park was named after one of the executives at the Irvine Company, who I actually worked with, Roger Seitz. So this is an important park, and our project does not block, as the staff report notes, the preserved view in this location is actually going down the center of the of the block, not across our property. But again, in this location, we do not cause any view issues. And there is our building.
Oh, I agree.
Life justice doesn't happen.
No.
And I, of course, for my daughter and my grandkids, I've always been thinking, oh, yeah, here, you know. But I'm like, what? I'm with you today. I'm honestly, like, for a couple years, I could have done that.
Hey, Noah, mute your phone, mute it.
Turn it up, baby.
Noah, 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 mute.
New Pier.
Mute your computer.
Great fun of parks for the kids. Okay, Sandy, Benny, you know, the kids.
You should turn it off. Turn it off.
Can you read it?
Okay. Cora, where are you?
I'm trying to get my presentation back, but I'm here in Newport Beach.
It's not.
I can conclude, and that's what the council's wishes are. I'm pretty much there.
Yes.
Okay. I won't show any more slides. But just finally, what I was going to say is that we, as as staff has pointed out, we are, we have coming forward to you with a voluntary DA of $2.5 million, which is approximately $89,000 per unit. It's the council's decision tonight whether you want it allocated the way it has been forwarded to you. But the way it's allocated right now in your development agreement, it's 1.875 to the general fund. And then the remaining of the money has been allocated to as 3.25 mil, 325,000 for affordable housing, 150,000 for homeless housing, 150 for public safety. So that concludes our presentation. We think we've addressed all of the issues, both business-wise and from the homeowners. We think this is a beautiful project that fits in Newport Center. And we are hoping that you will agree with the unanimous decision of the planning commission to approve this project this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Newman.
You're welcome.
Do we have any council comments or questions? Ms. Dixon.
Well, without waiting for any drama, I think this is a beautiful project. I want to thank you. I want to thank the applicant, Mr. Ridgeway, for listening to the community. I think you first came forward maybe three years ago, so this, you've been working it five years ago. We've got to move things faster. But anyway, appreciate your patience and your fortitude and determination, and you listened to the residents, and you came forward with, in my opinion, a beautiful project. You came down three levels, three stories, is that what you did, two or three stories? And you reduced the size, the overall size. Importantly, you volunteered to agree to a development agreement. And I want to congratulate staff for the negotiation of that development agreement. Mr. Juerges, that is the highest per unit we have negotiated.
For, that is correct, for for-sale product, exactly.
That's very good. So thank you on behalf of the city and our general fund and the special funds that you identified. I just want to thank you for listening to the community. The materials that you identified here conform precisely, if not exceed, our general plan requirements. Natural, wood, stone, nothing artificial, totally Newport Beach quality. And I want to thank you for your patience in bringing this quality project back, and I look forward to supporting it. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other council comments? Ms. Brenner.
Ex parte communications. I met with Todd Ridgeway and Corley Newman and went over the whole project with them and was very impressed by the improvements to this project from when it came to the council before. So very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments, council? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. We have public comments on this? Mr. Mosher.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name is, again, is Jim Mosher. I do agree is an improvement over the previous incarnation you saw of this project, but I think the council should aware, be aware that it continues to have three major problems. The first one, as you know and heard, our city charter limits the authority of the council to add housing beyond the limits last approved by voters in our general plan. You are allowed to add up to 100 units over 10-year period in each area of the city, such as Newport Center. The voters' last approved limits for Newport Center, along with the rest of the city, in 2006. Everything that was approved then has since then been built and more. And councils in the last 10 years have added to Newport Center 197 units that have never been approved by the voters. There are some nuances to this, as you heard in the slide, about 80% of previous approvals without voter approval, but 197 is clearly more than 100, so there should be a problem there. The second major problem has to do with heights. As you perhaps know or do not know, back in the late 1960s, residents of Newport Beach became concerned about the proliferation of tall condo or apartment buildings, such as you see today around the Turning Basin and Harbor. They enacted height limits, which have been in effect and continue to be in effect since There are areas of the city where taller buildings are allowed in the north end of Newport Center and in the airport area. But the citywide limit on the height of a multifamily residential structure, which is what this is, is 28 feet. That limit can be increased through a number of mechanisms. One is called a site development review. Another is the is the approval, as you're being asked to do tonight, of a planned community. But through that process, you can only add four feet, which brings the allowed height to 32 feet. This project, as proposed, is 21 feet over the city's height limit. And then the final problem is you are being asked here to call this a planned community, which allows you to make up kind of your own zoning rules other than with respect to height for certain kinds of projects. But a planned community is supposed to be an area of 10 acres or more intended for large-scale development, where it integrates and coordinates a variety of land uses. This is one single residential building on one and a quarter acres. It's clearly is not a planned community. So even if there was a height exception for planned communities, which there is not, how can one building be a planned community? What would be next? Would my single house be a planned community if I wanted to make up my own rules? Those are the problems with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. Close the public hearing. And do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
All right, let's vote.
Prior to doing the roll call vote, I need to read the ordinance titles for ordinance 2021-19 and ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach approving development agreement DA 2020-1 for the residences at Newport Center located at 150 Newport Center Drive. Ordnance 2021-20 and ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach approving zoning code amendment CA 2020-8 and planned community development plan PC 2020-1 establishing the residences at Newport Center located at 150 Newport Center Drive. Councilmember Blom.
Yes.
Thank you. And be careful, your mic has been going, turning on and off randomly. Councilmember Brenner?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Duffield?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Muldoon?
Aye.
Mayor Avery?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to Monrovia Avenue, item 17, zoning code amendment and general plan amendment to change the land use designation in zoning district from multiple unit residential to private institutions.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Avery and council members. So this is the 1499 Monrovia. It is simply a general plan amendment. We're changing the designation from residential to private institution to allow a future high school. Pacifica Christian is the high school that's looking to go on that location. There's an existing office building there. They're doing a tenant improvement to that building. Tonight's item is not the use permit for the high school. That will be handled with a separate application that will go to the planning commission. This is simply just changing the land use to allow for private institution to actually allow an actual high school on this property. And since you approved 150 Newport Center, then this property here, this project site, removes residential units and will allow a future high school in this location. Chelsea Craigers here, she can answer more questions if you'd like. If you'd like a PowerPoint, we can definitely provide that for you. And the applicant is here also.
Thank you. Does council desire PowerPoint on this? All right. Any council member questions? All right, seeing none. We'll hear public comment on this item.
Good evening. I'm Shawna Schaffner from CAA Planning, representing the applicant tonight. I do have a PowerPoint planned, but since you haven't requested one from staff, we'll be available for any questions. We request that the council approve the general plan amendment and zone change tonight consistent with the planning commission recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. My name is Catherine Anderson. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. I have three children, none of whom are old enough to attend Pacifica. But we've been watching the school, and we're really excited about the opportunities it brings to our community. And I would urge you to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark McCardle, and I've been involved with Pacifica for seven years. Born and raised in this area and had the unique and somewhat applicable experience of actually going to the high school that was located where Pacifica is today on 15th Street. I have three children. My eldest was too old to attend, just missed being able to attend the first year of Pacifica. But my middle did and had four amazing years there. Graduated, was accepted into USC with scholarships and honors. And now his younger brother cannot wait to get into Pacifica himself when he's done with with Harvard A. School. It's been an amazing experience for our family and what it's added to our community and our community of friends who are either directly involved or just involved through the friendships and alliances that we've made. And I dearly hope that more people can have the experience that we did, that was so enriching and so impactful. And asking for the council to approve the general plan and zoning change for the property at 1499 Monrovia for the use, continued use for Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? All right, seeing none. Mr. O'Neill.
I'd like to just echo the thoughts from parents that have come here. Pacifica is one of those schools that has grown and matured and is getting to the point now where it's really enriching all of our city. It's enriching the parents whose children go there, the children who are going there, and really helping a lot of civic participation. So to the leaders at Pacifica, keep going. I greatly appreciate it. As you expand, continue to expand those horizons, too. So I'm going to go ahead and move staff recommendation on this.
Second.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes, I was going to second it, too, but Ms. Brenner did. An ex parte, I've been to Pacifica many times, but I was there yesterday doing a site visit. And interestingly enough, of course, I support this item tonight, but there are three, there's one, it's one of three schools line by line there on Monrovia, and it certainly makes a lot of sense. I know some residents and thereby community have expressed some concerns on the conditional uses. And as Mr. Juerges says, that will be addressed before the planning commission. And I do know, and speaking with the And I do know, and speaking with the administration at Pacifica Christian, that they are very attuned, not just now, but have been consistently through the entire process of construction, very sensitive and caring, and that's just the kind of people they are, because they care about their community, and they're working with the neighbors, and they will continue to as the use requirements get developed. But I will echo Mr. O'Neill. Pacifica Christian is just a tremendous asset to our community and to the neighborhood, and I think the vast majority of neighbors are very pleased to see the quality of students that are attending from all over Orange County. It's really fabulous, the scholarship students, the scholarship program they have, so it's not just Newport Beach residents, and it's making their fine academic program and athletic program. They have a very successful athletic program available all across Orange County. While I cannot second the motion, I enthusiastically support it and look forward to their continued progress in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council comment?
I just wanted to add my ex parte communication. I also did a tour yesterday with David O'Neill, who's the head of the school, and it was amazing. Not only do I wish my grandchildren were going there, I wish I could go back to high school and go there. It was such an interesting conversation, and it was one of those conversations centered on the discussion groups that they have at their school, and I just, I could not be more impressed with this.
Great. Is that it up here? All right, thank you. So the public hearing is closed, and we've got a second and a motion. So off with the vote.
Prior to conducting roll call vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance 2021-21 and ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach approving zoning code amendment CA 2021-3 to change the zoning code designation from RM 2420/3100 multiple residential to PI .49 FAR private institutions for the property located at 1499 Monrovia Avenue. Councilmember Blom?
Yes.
Councilmember Brenner?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Duffield?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Muldoon? And Mayor Avery?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. We're moving on to item 18, approval of a mobile crisis response team to help assist residents and homeless individuals experiencing mental health crises related to COVID-19 and a community development block grant and professional services agreement. This is a great thing.
This is very good. We're very excited about this. We have just a short presentation.
Yes.
Just real briefly, if that's all right with you.
Good stuff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Carol Jacobs, your Assistant City Manager. This is my very last council meeting, and I want to thank you for the pleasure and honor of serving with you for the last six years. Really do appreciate it.
It's been great, Carol.
And this is what a way to go out.
Right.
This is a great, this is a great project. We're really excited about, and I want to just give you a little brief history of where we are with this. Here's our current situation with our homeless. We have about between 60 and 95 homeless individuals, and we've seen a rise in homelessness during the last, during this COVID, in the last 18 months. In July of 2021, CityNet went out and did a point-in-time count, and we found that about 82% of our homeless live on the street, 12% live in vehicles or RVs. 22% of our homeless have been on the street three to five years, 17% six to 10 years, and 12% have been on the streets for over 21 years. That's a very, very long time to be on the streets. And as we've talked about this before, this issue can't be solved, it can only be managed. And I want to talk a little bit about how we're doing that right now. Here's our demographics. Most of our folks are white. We have some Latino and Latina folks and some others that don't identify one way or the other. Most of our, most of our population is male, and we have a bulk of our population between 45 and 64 years of age, with 10 folks who are senior citizens. That's as of September 21. We're keeping this data on a monthly basis now so that we can track kind of who's who and how we're doing with them. But since 2019, we've had a lot of successes, and it's been a lot of hard work by a lot of folks in this organization. We have housed permanently 67 people. Those people are not on the streets anymore. We housed a man who had been on the street for 30 years. It took, it took us two or three years to talk to him, to get him housed. We recently housed an individual who'd been living at the Newport Pier for eight years. He, he had been a concern to many, many residents, and again, huge efforts by our staff, CityNet, and all of our partners to get him into a permanent home. And we opened our shelter in May of 2021, and we have had 1,743 shelter nights. That means for those nights, people were not on our streets, and I think that's something that we can really be proud of. One of the folks that have just come into our homeless shelter is a man who'd been homeless for 12 years, and we moved him from the shelter and into permanent housing. And we got a woman who was a senior citizen, had been homeless for 15 years, into the shelter. Again, the shelter is that first step from the shelter into permanent housing. And you know, we've talked about the great team that we've assembled to kind of tackle this problem. And this is our approach, and we brought this back to you in February, and we've kind of put our homeless folks in the middle, and we've surrounded them with all of our services. And I want to talk about the yellow circle with the question marks on it, because that's our next, that's the next piece of the puzzle. Our missing piece is the mental health piece, and we have been fortunate enough to connect with Be Well, Orange County. This is a relatively new organization. They provide mental health services to the community, and they provide engagement, street-level engagement. You don't have to go to their offices. You don't do that. They come to us. They come to our community. They are going to partner with our public safety folks, our police and fire, CityNet, and our city staff, and our Costa Mesa Shelter as well. We have some CDBG funding that we're going to talk about, and we're going to be focusing on COVID issues for our first year, and we're going to have two people available in the community 12 hours per week, not 12 hours, 12 hours per day, seven days a week. That's our initial contract with them. But here's what else they offer that we do not have at all in this community at this point. They have a campus in Orange right now, and I understand that they've also been awarded a second site in Irvine. So when that opens, we will be available to utilize that as well. But they offer crisis stabilization services. If somebody's having a crisis, their staff can bring them to Orange and get their situation stabilized. They have a sobering and a recovery station. So if somebody is on the street and they're causing a problem because they've been drinking or there's drugs or things like that right now, our police, our paramedics will take them to Hoag, and paramedics will be sitting, they call it sitting on the wall for a couple hours while, while they wait for that patient to get admitted to the ER. This is a drive to Orange. They're dropped off there. They're taken by Be Well folks, and they're allowed to stay there to recover and sober up. They also have substance abuse services. So if people have substance abuse and they need treatment, these are treatment facilities where they can, they can stay for a while until they can get moving on the right path. And they have services for serious mental health disorders. And so those are the services that we do not offer in this city right now that Be Well will be adding to our, to our toolbox of services for homeless individuals. And I just, I want to add one thing. It's not just homeless individuals, it's any person who happens to be in this community, whether you're a resident or a visitor, you're driving through. If you have some kind of incident that you need mental health services for, we can contact Be Well, and they will take care of that person.
Ms. Dixon?
Carol, thank you. A quick question on this. So how is Be Well, Orange County, doing from a capacity standpoint? Because I know Huntington Beach is participating, perhaps other cities are. How are they doing?
Our understanding is that they have, Huntington Beach is up and running, Garden Grove, and we have, we do have the executive vice president, the chief officer here, Marshall Moncrief is here to, can answer some questions, but they have promised us that they can gear up and within about three months, so by November, December, we should have these folks on the street and available to provide services to the community.
November, December. So if we approve this, if we approve this item this evening, and so to be a couple weeks, I don't want to get ahead of it, but just, yes, I mean, just, when will you be on the streets of Newport Beach if we approve this item this evening?
Marshall, why don't you come on up?
Thank you very much. Nice to see you all again. We would be on the streets in December. And so to approve tonight, and really the lag time is the van and getting the vehicle retrofitted. And so we do have vehicles that we've ordered with you in mind and other cities. Irvine's going to go live as well, and they're sitting out in the harbor right now.
Oh, am I afraid of her?
And so as soon, as soon as that gets in, we will retrofit that van. We've got it down to a science. We can retrofit it in about four or five weeks at the most, and so it'll probably go live early December.
Very good. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
A quick note on the capacity issue. It is important to mention real quickly. So we have no illusions about, there's only so many beds at that facility. The important thing to understand, though, is that the crisis services cycle on a 24-hour cycle. And so because it's the right level of care and it's the right provider, we stabilize the vast majority of people in under 24 hours and get them out into outpatient levels of care and back to community. And when we're live in a community, we can oftentimes avoid facility-based care by being so prompt and immediate in the community itself. So when our pilot in Huntington Beach, the vast majority of the people we're interacting with were able to meet their needs with resources in community and avoid facility-based care. So all of those ingredients come together to make sure this thing works for you. Yeah, thank you.
So how do, how do we see this working here in Newport Beach? We've identified that our police and fire folks get about 4,500 calls a year that have some kind of mental health component to it. So our chief of police and Be Well have already been, have already been discussing how this will work. We do not want to put the Be Well folks in any harm's way, and then so they will be working on a process where if a call comes in, our dispatchers will understand whether this needs a police response or a Be Well response, but in the beginning, police and, police and fire will go out, you know, Be Well will come in as a secondary, and once our police and fire have stabilized the situation, they can hand off to Be Well, and then Be Well will take, take care of them from that point forward. It's a, it's a learning process. This is a new process for everybody, so we're going to take some time and take it slow and make sure that the Be Well folks understand our police and, how our police and fire work and vice versa. And so we think, once this learning period gets over, you know, our, our staff and our dispatchers and our police will be more comfortable with saying, okay, this is really a very low-level mental health issue, and we'll just send, we'll just dispatch Be Well directly. If it's something that, you know, could be a little, little more hairy, we would, we would send, obviously send police and fire out first. We want to make sure that the person is being taken care of from the police and fire standpoint first, but sometimes, you know, our police or our fire department may ask Be Well to go in first because it's not a uniform. Sometimes uniforms tend to, you know, make people with mental health issues a little more scared or edgy than, than seeing somebody who's not in a uniform. So, you know, they, they are the professionals at that, and they'll work that out with our staff. We've already been having communications between the staffs, and, and we're learning from what's going on in Huntington Beach. Huntington Beach was kind of the first on the scene, and they've learned some things, and so we get the benefit of that learning. So here's, so here's the cost for a two-person team, 12 hours a day, seven days a week, that's here in town. It's a little over $1 million, and then we have a one-time cost of $132,000. We have had, Be Well has already received a donation from one of our residents who wishes to remain anonymous of $132,000 to pay for that van for us and for the initial startup supplies. So we are very, very grateful to that person, and we want to thank them publicly, even though we can't tell you who they are. One of the other things that we want to note is that in the last couple of months, you just approved an application for some SB2 funds, and those SB2 funds have been designated for our shelter, but our shelter is being paid for by the general fund. So our SB2 funds will cover some of that cost, which will then free up some general fund money to help offset some of these costs. The other thing is, you know, this first year, we have $717,000 in CARES Act money. So this is really COVID-related money. People have really experienced some really mental health concerns over this period, and so the Be Well staff will be working to really help people with, with the COVID issues that have arisen over, over the past period. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Obviously, Marshall is here, and he's well-versed in his programs, and if you have any questions for him as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple demographic questions, going back to your earlier assessment of the inventory of people. Are we finding that people are still coming in to Newport Beach? I mean, you're incredibly positive what we're doing as the team to move folks, gain their confidence, work with them, gain their confidence, and move them into the temporary shelter. Are we finding that it just is a constant cycle, or new people are coming unknown to us?
It's, it's very, it's a very transient group of folks, and, you know, the point-in-time count is exactly that. It's, you know, two days. And some people are just passing through. Maybe those people, some of those folks have only been here a couple days, and they're moving through. You know, Natalie can tell you, I think Natalie's still here, she can tell you story after story about people who come here during the day and they, they go to Laguna Beach at night. I mean, people have these routines that they have. So I think we are seeing new people come in, and we're seeing new people go out, and we are seeing our, you know, kind of our core group of residents. I think that is getting smaller. I think those are those, those really hard-to-place folks. I think we're, we're getting at some of those really longer-term homeless people that we've had an opportunity to really get to know and to get to convince to step into those next, those next roles, you know, with either getting through substance abuse and moving on and getting permanently housed. It's been, it's been challenging.
Okay, just a couple more questions. I'm very pleased about this. I'm very supportive. What, have we been able to track recidivism? Do we know that folks that go into the temporary shelter, do they move on to the desired ancillary services, or are they coming back? Or what do we know?
There is, there is a very small percentage of folks that will self-exit themselves, and I would say less, on less than one hand, people we've asked to leave because they, they can't behave themselves properly. We did, we have, we worked really well with Costa Mesa on this one, because if somebody is misbehaving in the shelter and they're asked to exit, there was a rule with Costa Mesa that said they couldn't come back for 60 days. Well, 60 days is, A, is a long time, and depending on the violation, maybe 60 days is too long. So we've worked with Costa Mesa very successfully and said, look, if, if Officer Carter, who is our homeless liaison officer, and Natalie say this person needs another chance, let them back in in three days or 10 days or seven days, they can make that call. So we have that opportunity to put somebody back into the shelter if they, if they've really, if they've had a bad day, because if they've got mental health issues and they've been on the street for a long time, all of this is very new to them, right? And so we have to give them some grace as they try to figure out how to, how to be sheltered. If they haven't been sheltered in 15 years, folks just don't know the, they don't have the same skill sets you have anymore. You know, they don't have that ability, they don't even know how to sleep in a bed sometimes. And so we have to give them some chances. It's been very rare that we've done that, and we've been very successful in moving people to permanent shelter and/or to rehabilitation programs.
And one more question to, now that Be Well is connected with Newport Beach, well, the 20 beds that we have in the shelter, then if they need mental health, can they be transitioned to Be Well?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Carol, did I, is 4,700 calls annually for mental health issues?
Yes.
And so I imagine we anticipate additional vans over time?
I don't know.
Can one?
Marshall said you could handle about 12,000 calls. Marshall said you could handle about 12,000 calls a year?
Mayor, with the one van, we probably would be able to cover the call volume at least as projected now, and we'll work closely with Chief Lewis and be monitoring the response times and making sure we can handle that. We also expect that as other cities contiguous to Newport Beach come online, there's going to be the ability for shared resources.
Okay.
And so we can really optimize this thing over time.
Great.
Yeah. But we don't have concerns right now about meeting those needs with the one van.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. No other comments? Do we have any public comments on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and councilpersons. My name is Cindy Voorhees. I'm the senior priest at St. James Episcopal Church, and I would just urge you to support this project. I'm on the front line every day. I'm literally exhausted. Mental health issues are springing up all over, it's not just homelessness. I'm working with researchers out of Israel that have worked with the subject of collective trauma and have officially called our pandemic a collective trauma worldwide, where you're going to be seeing a tsunami of mental illness coming up in the years to come, not months, but years. I'm dealing with teenagers who've lost time in high school that are all of a sudden changing personalities. I deal with people that are afraid to call the police because they may be, you know, igniting the problems at home, where a Be Well van would show up with someone, plain clothes, and be able to talk to them and reason with them. The families would definitely be able to feel more comfortable with that. I can't tell you the amount of trauma that I deal with on a weekly basis, and I deal with hundreds of families, and I would just urge you to support this van because it is working in Huntington Beach. I've been in touch with Be Well and have seen their work. It's excellent, and I just would urge you again to, you know, get on board because I do believe it's getting worse out there. We need the help, and certainly even at my church, if I could just call someone that could come to the front door, because I have people knocking on my door a lot. And it's obviously mental breakdowns, it's a tremendous amount of anxiety right now. There's anxiety about, you know, re-entering into society after being, you know, locked down. So I would just say that, you know, there's multiple issues here, not just homelessness, although that's a supreme problem, and I deal with that also. But families are really in trauma, especially young children right now. So highly supportive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comment on this item? Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I think we need to also stress the cost savings of this because I had a neighbor next door whose wife died and he became an alcoholic, and he called in a bomb threat to the police department, and they closed off two blocks around all of our, both of our houses, and had the SWAT team there, and it took hours for that situation to be resolved. And so now when I look at this and think that we can have mental health professionals that could, he was not a dangerous person, he did not have a bomb, and somebody that had the capability of talking to him would have been able to go in there and save us a lot of resources from our city police department. So I think that's an important consideration, and I like the fact that it's not just the homeless, it's like anyone in our community that has a mental health issue.
Ms. Dixon?
Just want to make my concluding comments. I want to thank staff and Carol, your last meeting. Thank you for all your work, and Natalie, and Grace, how you organized, what do you call it, the SWAT team or rapid response team for the last 18 months. As you say on your chart, this is hopefully the last link, the missing link that we can really serve the people. Most of these, most of these homeless Newport Beach residents are originally, do we have that kind of data?
It seems to have shifted a little bit. It's a little bit less Newport Beach last residents, you know, there seems to be a little bit less of that. We seem to get a little more folks that are from Orange County, but not necessarily from Newport Beach.
Well, we're doing our part for Orange County, so I'm very proud of our city. Thank you, staff. And if there hasn't been a motion, I'll make a motion to support staff's recommendation.
Thank you. No more. We've got a second?
Yes.
Okay, no more further comment from council? Ready for the vote?
Councilmember Blom?
Yes.
Councilmember Brenner?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Duffield?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Muldoon?
Yes.
Mayor Avery?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the councilmembers who voted with the prevailing side.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.